All right, we're gonna get started. Welcome everyone. This is our monthly workshop meeting for the Board of Commissioners Springfield Township. Everybody's probably somewhat familiar, but this is the meeting where we get into the nuts and bolts of various topics. And if there's anything that we need to take formal action on, we vote on that at our Wednesday business meeting, which will be in two days. And so let me just. We're just missing Commissioner Cobb. We are expecting him. And do we have any Zoom attendees? Yes, all right. Welcome to the Zoomers. Typically, we start with matters that involve our engineer. So we can go through that and then he can be on his way. We don't have any scheduled items tonight, so we can cover what people are here for. So. I know many of you are here probably for the tank bar property. Is anybody here for anything else? No? Okay. All right. So we can go to that item as soon as Tim is done. Tim, you got the floor.
Great. Thank you very much, guys. Just a word of update on some construction projects that are proceeding through various phases in town. So certainly, the middle school project seems to be coming along quite nicely. I think with school being over in the next couple of days, week, they'll be able to ramp up some of that work. They've been kind of avoiding bus times and dismissal times and those kinds of things at the best they could. So that's moving along pretty well. The Sal's parking lots are coming along nicely. They have gotten started in there. We had some erosion control concerns like last Thursday, Friday, that they stepped up to the plate and it got addressed. So that's, that's good. Hall's lane, you can see is going vertical. I've been asking the contractors as to when they are expecting to put the sidewalk back on Halls. It's all cut out, but it's not stoned in yet. So I'm waiting for an answer as to when that sidewalk will be back in place. And again, we can open it up to the public. So I'll stay in touch with you guys as I find out more information. Bucks County Water and Sewer, you've seen some of the work that they're doing to replace some of their sewer mains over on Hole Drive especially. I think that's going okay. I know Jim and our guys have been out there quite a bit. I just want to make sure that people are all aware that that's going to be a fairly lengthy project by the time they're done. There will be some road closures. There's some open trenches, obviously. But we're doing our best to make sure that that construction area stays safe and that people are notified in advance if their street's going to be impacted or their homes occupied. I think the only thing on your agenda tonight is consideration of award of that Avondale Road Storm Sewer Project. Recall, we've got some drainage problems out there that have persisted for many years. Avondale is on our list of roads to pave this summer. And so we were really hoping to get in, get that storm sewer installed before the contractor would be arriving to do his paving work. We opened bids last week. We had three very reputable contractors bid on the work. Certainly, James Kenny from Collegeville, we know very well. PAC One is actually the contractor doing the sanitary sewer work in town for Bucks County. And then kind of our favorite, Plymar Construction. Plymar was the low bidder, substantially lower than, than the other guys. I think they are local and they, they know our town. I think we're able to take advantage of, of some of that knowledge to give us a good price. We estimated that cost to be about $125,000. Plymar came in at $110,000. So that's a nice little, I guess, savings, especially for Mike and his budgets. But if you guys have any questions, otherwise, we'd like for you guys to consider awarding that contract to Plymar on Wednesday night if you're so inclined.
I'm surprised how far the bids were from each other.
Yep. As I looked at those bids, PAC One is obviously a much larger contractor. I think he's got a lot more overhead and just, you know, I don't think he's able to work at the same, I guess, same rates as, as some others. James Kenny, I'm very surprised at that number. He's usually a pretty competitive bidder. He works a lot. Lower Providence Township, where I also do some, some work. And I'm surprised at how high he was. Perhaps he was busy and just took a shot. That's what I kind of thought might be the case, but we'll see for sure.
So that'll be a motion for you on when you want to award that contract.
And just a quick question for you, really. This is all our performance.
No, no, this is money that you had put aside in your capital reserve fund for, for this project.
So it's not our.
It's not our funds. We, we had to have all that obligated or spent by the end of last year.
Great.
Any other questions for Tim?
Barring any questions, that's what I had to say.
Tim, any update or word on what second?
Oh, about the, the bridge. Yeah, you know what? Jonathan, good question. We did reach out to the county. I did speak to my contact. He was not aware of who we should speak to about that bridge replacement project. But he was researching that for us and I haven't heard back from him. I thought maybe I would last week.
Yeah, I saw your email after the meeting last month.
So let me do that. Let me, I'm kind of kick that cage a little bit so we can get some more information. It's, you know, very good question.
We also need to get word from PennDOT as well. That was another one. Well, nobody really knew what the answer was there. The wetlands mitigation area there, we didn't get verbal from them for a very small portion.
Yeah, there's.
The, the P or PennDOT? PennDOT.
Well, there are so many agencies that are involved. DEP certainly involved. SEP is involved. But PennDOT owns land that we would have to traverse through to build our walkway and our pedestrian bridge over the sandy run down there off of Walnut. And, and we've been reaching out to PennDOT and like, nobody knows, like, isn't that Bill's job? Well, no, no, I don't think it's Bill's job. I think it's Mary's job. And I'm like, well, no, Mary doesn't know about that. So, so we're trying to find the right person to talk to to get the permissions we need to occupy that land.
And what about the trail on the farm?
What's? Oh, that, yeah. Yeah, the county project. We understand that that is out on the street or will be out in the street for bidding soon. But I, I've not seen anything more from them. Like, if you know, so, yeah, it's been, I know they've been pushing very hard. I know there was a lot of negotiation with adjacent property owners. I believe that's come to closure. And so I think they were ready to bid. But I have not seen anything to confirm that, Tom.
Great.
Great, guys. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
All right, why don't we talk about the tank car site property that is. Where are we? To have F. So just as a matter of background, I'll open up the public comment. The Port, the architects for the project held an additional open house beginning of, of May. It was well attended with a lot of public feedback when they had presented a draft design that incorporated some of the features of the three concepts that they had presented the month earlier. And there was some, some feedback and the committee solicited additional feedback. For those of you in the audience, all the commissioners have seen all the emails and, and feedback submitted to the, with the committee and to the architects. So I'll open up for public comment. If anybody has any questions or comments on it. Will you kind of mic? Just make sure you give your name and address for posterity.
Margaret Mary Burke, resident of Orland. Just a quick question. I don't know if you folks are able to answer it. When, during one of the meetings, Port had, had requested the input from the residents, the neighbors, about what to put at that site. And without a doubt, the field and the hardcore were not among the top contenders as what the residents wanted to see. Yet, they were incorporated in the proposed draft. And I don't know why. Another comment that I'd just like to put out there, so just to keep it in the back of their minds, because I'm a resident bordering that property, is that the wind tears across that open space and really wreaks havoc on our homes and everything. Couple of years ago, there was a near tornado, lots, you know, lots of damage with that. And I was just asking the commissioners to be mindful of the wind protection that that property can afford to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Hesser, Orlamun Avenue. Do you? We came here tonight because I wasn't sure if, if you wanted us to make public, additional public comments about the property and what we need. Though you have our emails, I don't know if that's something that the commissioners are
taking into considering tonight or. Emily. So if it's, unless there's something new, I don't know that there's anything.
It was on the agenda, so we thought, you know.
Yeah, I wanted to open up the public comment if there was anything new.
Okay.
I know commissioners are probably going to give some feedback. And some of us are on the committee, so we're intimately aware, whereas the other commissioners are not, may have questions and comments that they want to make.
But you have all the emails and all the, that all the residents and everything did. Okay, great. Thank you.
You got it. Any commissioners have any questions or comments on it?
I'm just wondering if, when we're Susie being on the intricate process, can we offer feedback on the answer to the first question?
The course and.
In terms of the choices that have been incorporated?
Yeah, I think we, I would say, Jim, I think maybe we could start by just summarizing for the benefit of everyone where we are. Maybe that's the theater area or if you don't have to report it.
Sure. I mean, I would say specific to the question, there's a lot of feedback and a lot of people that gave input and not always at those meetings. So there's no perfect design that's going to incorporate everything that could be there. I think people requesting for active, activity there, including a full-size sports field was pretty prominent, even if it wasn't specifically marked like on the dots, you know, on the voting, that kind of stuff. So, I mean, that process and actually having votes and telling votes, I mean, that's one part of it, right? There's other needs of the township, wants of the township, things that the architect would, would display. And it's our job collectively to figure out what we want to be there or not. So I kind of, when I saw the, from the previous month, where there was three conceptual designs, one was a very active sort of sports scenario, one was a more of an active play scenario, and then one was like totally like a passive, passive kind of park. And if you went on the line and looked at it, everyone that I saw was like, wow, that's great. That'd be awesome. But this was, oh, that's really cool too. And that was really cool too. So I think it was their best attempt to incorporate some of the best features of all of those ideas. It's not a final design, so we're tasked with giving them feedback and, and refining it further.
And I would speak to at least the field side side of things. I think repeatedly at Parks and Recreation, we have been share the information, not just from residents, but also from Park and Recreation staff and from the committee, the Parks and Rec Committee, that's, that's not necessarily this committee, that fields are in high demand in our area. You've heard that a number of times. And I think it's fair to say that here's a smaller size field and then made the determination of whether a larger field is required or not. That's a, that's a fair detail that we should probably suss out. And, you know, I, I guess I could share my own feeling, which is really tough call, because truly at the other meetings, the idea of having a somewhat larger field is appealing if it was possible. But understandable, understanding the residents' rightful concerns about parking and all the other challenges. For the hard courts, I will say, I tended to agree at the last meeting. I was surprised to see them in the design because I don't believe, and then I guess I could look back at the presentation right now. I saw a lot of demand for hard courts and maybe even the opposite statement was made multiple times that a lack of desire for hard courts. However, on the same token, there was lots of conversations about increased accessibility and increase availability for people of all abilities to come and use that space. And I think in their expertise, that would tend to lend itself toward a hard surface. And it, I think it was a fairly small hard surface. It just allows the opportunity to use that space in a myriad of ways that we, we may not even foresee them right now. So like you, I was surprised for the benefit of my commissioners to see that. But I can understand if you're also seeing a high demand for a variety of usable space, particularly for those of different abilities, that a hardcore would be incorporated. So to Jim's point, probably their, their first blush at going for it. But all your feedback received, taken, I think, just to summarize, I think that was good, where I was getting at is what I saw in the emails and so commissioners can correct me if I'm wrong, was a desire for certainly a buffer, the buffer between the neighborhood and the park, very important. A lot of concerns about parking, particularly if a field size were increased or, or even for the field as it is. A desire for accessibility is what I read and recall. And again, that might lend itself to the hard surface. A desire to not have a hard surface, but those might be two competing interests. So I think those were the main pieces. And to Jim's point, seeing the first three intimately, the 3D models and every, and, and coming out with those three designs and then coming forward with this, I think it's a pretty fair marriage of all the three initial ones that they came up with. But my instinct is, is really just to acquire my fellow commissioners about the hard surface. I think the smaller sized field makes the fairest sense. I mean, I, I do, and I do feel badly that we can't provide a larger field, I think. Not that we can't, but to, to choose maybe a smaller field as opposed to a larger one, but it may make the fairer sense to accommodate the challenges of having a whole blown field. But I could be persuaded. I just, I guess I would talk to my fellow commissioners here and see what you think. But I, I did have some hesitation around the hard surface, but again, can be persuaded by the accessibility. That's my thought process. And I think that's my summary of what I read. The as is would be lovely, but maybe there's a couple of small things like that that maybe my fellow commissioners might weigh in.
Yeah, I agree with what, basically what you said on the field. I mean, the, I want to deliver for the people that, for the people that want to play sports. And we, we recognize there is a demand and a shortage. And that's a good thing. And one of the, I think, this is before pretty much everyone except Peter on this board. The, the concept was going to be softball fields because at the time, there was a more of a need for that. With the reworking of Veterans Field, it's, it's less.
I think it was a little bit of both. It was a multi-use rectangle, we'll call it, plus, you know, a full-size softball or baseball field.
Right.
That was what was on the original concept plan.
Right. And that was just a concept. It wasn't voted on or anything like that. The concept was that it would, would help supply the field. So when I hear loud and clear from lacrosse and soccer, and I do want to deliver something for them. But the realities of this site to me is that it's just not the right area, just the parking and the coming and going. The full-size field would basically dominate the site. And that's what it would be. So you're, you'd get a lot of traffic for the night game and then the rest of the day, it's, it's just a big grassy, you know, rectangle that is not really serving the township for everyone. So. So for that reason, I, I think that we can't accommodate the, or shouldn't accommodate a full-size field, but the smaller one is a good, good happy medium. They would get some use and it would still allow the walking track and the other park features that people could use that different place in the day.
And would that smaller field, just for the benefit of listeners, obviously be accessible to neighborhood folks to use, but also for teams to use for practices, but without the game day traffic, like drop-off pickup for practices or?
Correct. I think they would envision they would still, could have games there, but it would just be limited to the younger, less kids on per, on the field, less cars, less traffic.
They described it as a seven V seven field as opposed to.
Eleven V eleven, same. Yeah, 70% of what we would see. And the hardcore, I, I kind of like the hardcore. I'm not married to one way or the other. I think it's a nice feature that if people are at the park and kids are there, they can do stuff and play ball and that kind of stuff. Certainly not pickleball. We shut the door to that because of the, the noise issue. But I don't feel that strongly about it either. So if the committee and everybody wanted to reduce that or eliminate it, you know, I'm not losing stakeovers.
At this point, we're really looking at just providing feedback and direction. Nothing more definitive than that.
Correct. So this was their first attempt at a unified design, you know, that pulled in from a couple of different concepts. And now we're giving them feedback to what we like about it, what we don't like about it. They'll tweak it and bring back another iteration.
And Mike, how close are we to a definitive price tag?
Uh, we'll develop something for us.
Not for development, but for the actual purchasing of properties. That done?
That's done. We're through the litigation on that. That, that's.
No other costs.
Other than the development.
Right, that's right.
The demolition, the development.
Okay. And we're all secure in the, on the environmental side?
Well, that's submitted. That's under review by DEP.
I was unclear as to what's going to happen to the pile of dirt that sits in the middle of it. Where's that going to go?
So that's according to the, the DEP plan that was submitted. And from the beginning, when we got the remediation work plan, project scope approval, the purpose of the dirt was to put an additional two-foot cap over the entire site to serve as an additional buffer to the cap that's there now.
Is that, is that required? We have to do that?
Once it's approved in the report, yeah.
Do we expect DEP to require that?
Do we expect them to require that? Yeah. Because that's what we proposed from the beginning. So early on, they, when we went to, before we condemned the property, we went to the EPA and we wanted a comfort letter that basically said, you're not going to hold us responsible for any additional cost to remediate this property. They came back and they said, okay, well, what do you want to do with it? Here's what we want to do with it. How are you going to achieve that? So working with, it was a different environmental engineering company at the time. They came up with the concept of if you want to do playing fields, put additional fill material on top, topsoil, protect the cap. You're going to have signage and that kind of stuff that says no digging and submit that to EPA. So we submitted that to EPA along with DEP and had a meeting with DEP and said, okay. And then EPA came back and they said, okay, well, we want you to go through this DEP Act Two process. Met with DEP, here's our plan. What do we do here? What's the next step? They gave us direction. We hired another engineering firm. If you're doing a RFP, and that's the track we've been on for many years.
But the wheels are clear, as far as we know. The testing has all been done.
So we conducted.
Retesting.
We, we've conducted many, many.
Numerous tests.
Quarters of consecutive testing. And we are at a point where we hope through our submission, it'll get approved. We've gotten four consecutive quarters of stable and decreasing levels of, the problem was the benzene.
Benzene, yeah, sure. Sure. So do we have any idea whether the amount of, the pile of dirt will be sufficient to cover the site or will we need to bring in additional fill to make?
We should have more than enough there and actually enough through some burns and things.
Okay, that's great.
To make some interest, because you saw on the, the presentation that, you know, the trail wouldn't necessarily be just a flat trail. It would have some, you know, interest to it, up and down.
And there's, there's no, there's no, there's no water feature to this plant, right?
So there's a they created a rock stormwater detention basin at the rear along the railroad.
Okay.
EPA came in and they did their remediation work. That's remained in place for the entire time. And that's where naturally the site falls in that direction. It would continue to fall in that direction. The port plan shows that that's the way you want to have the stormwater run to keep it away from the adjacent properties in the, the neighborhood.
But there wouldn't be any concept of having a standing pond or any water features or anything to attract the birds?
There's going to be a hookup for your own slip and slide.
Oh, good.
It'll be a meadow.
Meadow.
Meadow and lots of trees.
The, the basin, the basin would be designed, they would not hold water or continue. So I know there was some concern that came up at the meeting about mosquitoes.
Yeah.
Being treated typically.
A detention basin that would release, I wish Tim was here, within, it's either 48 or 72 hours. I don't know what the regulations require.
So basically mosquitoes need to be in standing one of the 10 days to do what they do. So that basin would be.
Yeah, it would deep water, unless there was another rain event.
Right.
You know, there would be more, but that would flush out, you know, the larva and be a.
And it, and it looks as if the engineers are calling for the, almost the entire site to be, to be fenced.
Well, yes.
Yes, okay.
That's part of some of the original feedback, wasn't it, from neighbors that I recall? Wasn't the request for?
Well, not exactly. They would not want it where it is.
Got it. I would see, I just remembered it was on posted notes.
Stephen Heveren, Bergen Road, Orland. Just a question about the DEP's involvement, I guess, as we get further down the line with the plans of, of what to do with this. I assume that the DEP, DEP and EPA have kind of final say in terms of the plans. Like if there's something in those plans that we want to have developed or that the community wants, that they could nix it and say, no.
I don't think so.
It can't be in there, or is it, just kind of how much influence would they have in terms of maybe possibly radically altering what we'd want there?
They're, they're basically just looking at whatever the existing environmental contaminants are that are on the property that they're looking at it for the Act Two purposes. So they're, they're not going to get involved in, okay, well, you can have a playing field, but you can't have this or, you know.
Okay. They don't, they don't, as long as the, the cap and everything is protected, they, they could care.
Yeah, if we proposed building something that we had to put a foundation or something, that would be an issue.
Then it'd be an issue.
We're remedying to a residential standard, because it's going to be a public park, as opposed to a standard that would be like an industrial standard or some other commercial standard.
Right.
So anything, you could build a house there if you want.
Okay, cool. I, I mean, my, I didn't get the chance to go to the meetings, but I mean, my own input would be for a park without fields in it. I know that there's a great need for, for fields in there, but I think it'd be great. We could, maybe not. So, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to just, I mean, I, I would advocate, you brought up the fence. I would advocate for the architects really looking closer at the the side next to the neighbors and, and seeing if there's room there to create more of the, not just a buffer in terms of separation, but a buffer in terms of it's not. I mean, some of those houses are like really close to the official property line. And it's sort of just been a gray area where they've maintained it or, or used it. And like, I don't, I don't think it's feasible to keep the existing fence line and all that. I mean, that's really a huge area. I think you're asking, is there a, is there an official setback that would have to happen? Mike, I don't, I mean, typically with you and a neighbor, you can put the fence right on the line.
Right. But, but it's zoned, limited, limited light industrial, if I'm correct about that?
Industrial. So the setback that you read in the zoning ordinance is for a building. So if we were to erect a building for a limited industrial purpose, you're correct. There's a setback requirement, minimum setback requirement. And then there's an additional setback requirement if it's adjacent to a residential property.
So it's only a building? So, so, so it could literally be right at our backyard then? So you don't have to.
Property line.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Parking lot.
Well, the fence could be on the property line regardless.
Yes, sure. Yes, yes.
Even if there was going to be a, a limited industrial building.
Yes, yes.
Constructed on the site, but the setback from that property line would have to be that 50 plus 25.
For the fence?
No, for the building itself.
For the building, okay. But because there's no building in this instance, there is no setback.
There's no setback.
Okay.
Obligation.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Mike, as from a staff point of view, do you have an opinion on fence placement?
Well, I, I think if you leave it in its current location, you're basically saying there's a third of the property that you're not going to utilize for any purpose. And it's very expensive property by the time we've been done through the litigation and the acquisition costs and the environmental costs and whatever the development cost would be. So it, it probably needs to move over towards the residential side. I think there needs to be a respectful buffer. I think Port has incorporated that into their plans with burning and new trees and a mix of evergreens and deciduous trees. So I think there's going to be an effective buffer there. The fence, I mean, when, when we built Laurel Beach Park, we did not fence it in at all. That was a, a former industrial type site. It was greenhouses. And the commissioners at that time said, we're, we're buying open space. We're not buying open space to fence it in. So, you know, the decision to put a fence up or not is really up to this board and where you want to put it.
Well, the, the fence that's there now was put in by the bus company.
Correct.
So they, they were just putting it in to secure their holding yard.
Their yard, yes.
That's they put in where they just needed, and that was it.
Can I ask the neighbors in the room? I know you can't speak for everybody, but they would have an opinion on not having a fence?
You gotta get up.
Because, and I'll frame it in that if there was natural buffers, like we build up a berm and trees and all that stuff, and that's.
Yeah, so.
So it's a natural where they're not. It's a natural, but they're not coming over there, but it's open to you guys.
James Roebuck, I live at one fifteen. I back up to it and personally. If the buffer were the trees, natural buffer, I'd prefer, I would, I would prefer not having a fence. I'd rather have it natural. So that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't think a a six foot high chain link fence would be appealing. Especially right off the back of my house.
Right.
My house is one of the ones that has, I think it's fifteen feet from the back of the house to the property line. And um,
From your actual house?
From the actual house and I have a patio, paper patio that takes up that whole space. So when I bought the house, I wasn't notified of this. You know, I have green grass and a shed. I have trees and there's a fence line for my neighbor that goes along the fence. Looks like it's all my backyard. But
Yeah.
Come to find out at the edge of that patio, that paper patio, all that back there is tank car property. So I prefer no fence.
Great, thanks.
Anybody else?
Mary Hassler, I'm at one eleven Orlemans Avenue. Um, we kind of have the opposite effect of Jamie, but I agree with them because we had the property line goes down on an angle and our house is much closer to the street and very tiny. It's a hundred and eight years old or something, so. Um. I I like the idea of not having a fence and for the rest of the neighbors that are stuck with that fifteen foot property line right up against their patios or back decks. Um, that's really tough and we've always maintained that property. So at at my end, we have our true property line is, you know. Where it is, we put up our provides to block the black sand from blowing out through and everything. But um, I definitely agree with the neighbors that we do definitely need a buffer and if it was great. If it could just be left where it is now, where where the property, where the people have put to their sheds and swing sets and stuff, that would be fantastic.
Um, I have a couple of comments, one being that the um, property that is not located in the fence area and closer to the residence that that it's not being put to use. It is being put to use by nature, by having nature. We're not growing another athletic field, but we're growing trees. Um, my other concern is that they are, uh, it has been proposed that the mature trees, shade trees existing on the property be removed and then put up small trees and um those trees are not going to be able to provide the shade, the um habitat to uh wildlife, um, the wind protection. And we're paying money, taxpayers' money to take down mature trees to put up small trees that will take decades to grow to where the size what they are now, the existing trees. And the premise is that um, why those trees, the older trees need to come down is because they need to spread the dirt. That is why those trees come down. It doesn't make sense. If the township accumulated too much dirt on the property, there are other ways to handle this. Um, as I said, you can make hills and one of the proposals had mounds. But those mounds really weren't incorporated with this final proposal. Um. Another thought I had was that when we purchased our home, we did not expect a fence or a parking lot to be at our backyard. It would be unfair of the township to drastically change what our backyards are like. It's one thing if we bought the house knowing that there is going to be you know, a fence right there adjacent behind, you know, our backyard or a parking lot there. But when we purchase the house, it's not fair for the township to drastically change what our lives are like, because we all sit out there. We all enjoy the outside. And I welcome the commissioners to come and look at the properties. You will see, we maintain it. It's green, it's, you know, we had green lawn out there the other uh, the other day. You know, we maintain this and we really do enjoy it and all the neighbors do and we do it, we don't complain. You know, we pay the money or our sweat and tears, but we enjoy it. And I just wanted to put that out for the commissioners consideration. Thank you.
Morgan, let me uh, mention the um the dirt, because I had asked Mike you earlier, that extra dirt that we have to put is not because we're trying to get rid of dirt. That's part of the approved plan, I mean.
That was drawn onsite intentionally to do exactly as they had proposed early on. So that most, the majority of that dirt comes from this property here and the high school when they put the the turf fields in across the street. And that was at the beginning of the project when we had gone to D E P and proposed the two foot of fill across the site and got consent from them that that was an approved way to remediate the land. So there's not too much dirt on site. There's an intentional amount of dirt on site to cover the two feet across the property.
In the port's presentation, they said that they need to take down the existing trees to spread that dirt.
Correct.
And does that make sense to anyone? And then plant trees that are not going to be um, mature? They're not going to provide any privacy, a buffer, it won't be a buffer, it won't protect the wind. It won't provide any security because if there's a fence, if there's no fence and you're having little trees like this as you're acting as your buffer, what's going to happen? You know, people are going to come over and, you know, I who knows?
Well, I I had initial, initial similar reaction to it. Um, obviously, I know about the two feet. A lot of them are non-native trees. If there's a, if there's a way that we can keep native healthy trees, like I have totally off work, like you're not going to get a bigger tree fan than me. My wife said we have to take down a dead tree that I love in my house. I'm like ready to chain myself to it, even though it's like dead, but um. But I think you, the board will share in this that we want to do everything possible to keep mature trees. I don't know. I mean, we have to put the the two feet down, spread it, it's going to kill trees that are under two feet, right? I don't know, like that's what an arborist is.
Well, even when you bury two feet up the trunk, it's it's not good for the tree.
No, no, agreed. And nor, and and but then the, that is not where the cap is where those mature trees are. So we have to be mindful of that as well. If you're putting.
Be an area where the berm is going to go.
That, from what I saw, the um, for the concept, I I'm I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
It's it's.
You know, to to talk about that.
The whole, around the. The whole side behind all the house, behind all the house.
Right. But, you know, does it common sense to, you know, take down these mature trees, pay money to have them taken down and then where are we and paying money to have you know, smaller trees planted? And if you're going to have larger trees planted, they just cost more money to to um, purchase.
Was there design sort of all or nothing? It was white and all or?
You you're you're basically taking comment on master plan right now. You're not authorizing an engineer to go out and design an actual plan that that meets exactly what this is. Right? This is all concept and master plan. When you're ready to move forward with park development, that's where you can get into the the nitty gritty of all of this. You know, do we save that tree? Do we take that tree down? Can we wind a path through here? Do we sacrifice the berms instead and put this in? Um, where you are though is you 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 probably need to get in touch with D E P and find out if there's going to be a dramatic change from what you've already submitted. And we've already been in front of D E P for years trying to get this approval. So.
It's a brand new world with D E.
Yeah, and I will say to you, we don't want to take down trees most of the time. But nobody's assessed the the health of these trees that are there.
Whether they're good trees or bad trees.
Whether they're good or bad.
We just went through trying to save that tree, the Hall's Lane project. Peter, you were a big proponent of that. Big old tree, right? We're kind of the parking lot is going to go and.
A majority of our park recreation, like park land budget goes to removing trees that are very, very mature and Jim would probably chain himself to them, but they're dead, they're they're diseased, they're a hazard, we have to take them down. And they cost thousands to take down
Right.
on an individual bit. But if you're going to do a major park redevelopment, you have a tree clip, a tree cutting or clearing company come in and they take them down at one time and it's much less costly. And then you start new ones and the new ones have a new lifespan. That you don't have those costs that are going to be coming up year after year after year.
Right, and and but those trees are not going to be able to do their job.
Initially, they're not.
Right, and decades, the man from Port said it could be decades. I'll be dead.
Um.
Okay, thank you.
James.
So, yeah, James Roebuck, I go by Jamie. Um, so the two foot cap. I just realized if you guys are talking about putting a two foot cap with that pile of dirt for the entire property, are we talking about the property line, like where our houses are? Like, I'm thinking am I going to have a two foot step up off my patio now because you're going to put two feet of dirt right at my patio?
It would probably be sloped.
Yeah.
Because at the back after my lawn or your lawn, um, it does drop down maybe two, three feet. So I don't know if you're just going to fill that in, make it level, or is it?
Yeah.
Does the plan really require you to do the entire property?
We don't know either. Yeah, it hasn't been engineered yet, Jamie, but but the two foot is the remediation. You know, in you can remediate sites in a lot of different ways.
Yeah.
One of them is you can put concrete slab down, we can pave the whole thing, right? That's a way of remediating it and keeping the cap, right?
Yeah.
From being touched and and compromised. We chose to use dirt because we're going to, you know, the initial plan was going to be playing fields. It's been modified and it's going to be something different. Hopefully something close to what, you know, we're looking at tonight. Um, but, you know, the two foot was included in the remediation plan with D E P.
What I'm asking is two feet border, border to border, all edges.
That's what it's, but at its current, two foot from its current elevation. So if it drops down, then it's going to be two feet on top of whatever that elevation is and two foot at this elevation.
In that situation, we'd actually level it out versus a lot if if that.
But it's two foot and two foot from where it currently is, it just kind of goes like that.
Right, he's saying it drops from his property line. We're not putting any dirt on his property.
Doesn't.
No, we wouldn't do it on his property.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But is the two foot requirement just above the existing cap? Or is it two foot?
Entire site.
The, even though the entire site was not capped.
So that, that's what I'm saying is that could be, that could be problematic with where the property lines are. To where, like, say, my patio to your property line.
Transition to adjacent properties.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, that that's got to be engineered.
Yeah.
You know, there'd have to be swales, there would have to be other things that that make sure that there's no adverse impact or runoff to your property.
The answer is not going to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Um, I wanted to address probably a couple of concerns and allow you to hear how I'm thinking about it so so that answers some of those questions and and obviously this is not so much answering questions, it's more processing the concerns to take into consideration. So, um, the trees matter. Agree that I don't think anyone here wants to take down trees if we can help it. But if it's an EPA require or a D E P requirement and we need to meet those demands to ensure the safety of the property and its long and and the longevity of its life. I think that one would have to err on that side and and meet whatever those demands are within reason, once we get to the engineering, et cetera. And obviously try to preserve as many trees as we can, but understand that there's a possibility that we have to do that for safety reasons. And I think that's the balancing act on that matter for for the preservation of those trees. As a person who's planted many trees on my own property, evergreens, for the reasons that you're concerned, I just hypothetically, I got twelve foot trees because I can't wait for my whole life for the baby trees as much as uh, it costs. And if there's a way to include evergreens or what have you, maybe that's something we could consider investing in as the other half of the balancing uh, of of um the the issue of safety, for example. Nothing set in stone, just allow you to hear how I'm thinking about it. Um, another big piece that I feel like is a little elephant in the roomy is the property line, not not in the sense that um, that the reality is we're we're one side of the property owners and the other is is yours. And I think a fair, a fair thinking about this is as stewards of the value of that property, what is the appropriate way to to share in the liabilities or costs of that property, whether that's a a possibility to maybe, maybe because you've already done work on some portion of it, is it, is it possible for you to basically take ownership of it through some exchange, right? Uh, or I I just don't know. But the reality is we're two different property owners and what's fair to the taxpayers and what's appropriate, right, uh, for for that division? I don't know. I'm just saying that's how I'm thinking about it from a fairness across all the taxpayers perspective. Um. And again, I put down parking and fence and and the question is that I would have for staff and for our solicitors and for our fellow commissioners is what are our liability concerns there? Um, and or how do we offload those liabilities if we're going to be offering some opportunity to have land that you now take? After all of the investment to Mike Taylor's point that the township has made in that, you know, expensive property, what is the fair exchange? How do we manage that? I don't know that answer right now, but that's how I'm thinking about it so that it's fair both, obviously as adjacent landowners and to take the 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 us, the adjacent landowner, the taxpayers. I share this story, I I also, and Mike knows this, I live next to a property that was not developed for some time. And so, hey, I dumped my deck, went where I thought it was going to be. Guess what? When the, when finally that property was developed, fence came right, basically clipped the corner of the deck that had already had there, right? And I, you know.
Did you get a permit for that, young lady?
Yeah, well, yes. But the point being, I, you know, but I should, I should have done the right thing and and what was my recourse, right? Well, oh, well, there's a property line. I should have thought about that and um, done it the right way or what have you. It it's something I think that just can happen. Um, so all that same, not being unsympathetic to your property line matters, just trying to think through the fairness of it for everybody. And I, I don't know if any other commissioners want to speak to that, but that's how I'm thinking about it. I don't know the answer. I don't know if that's a solicitor question or or something else or down the line. That's what I think.
Well, I'd already said I would advocate for looking at that, that the fence is not right there. And given the, given the neighbors some vote of come vote.
Yeah, to lower the impact.
Yeah, I mean, look, this is my word, these, these are my constituents. I want to deliver with you. I'm I'm sort of biased there. I also like you said, we have to serve the greater needs of the township and this is a.
But I think if you ask most realtors, is my house more valuable if I live closer to a park? I think they'd say yes. So really, no matter what we do here, from a park point of view and a homeowner point of view, you're probably going to be the beneficiaries of it.
Depends on whether or not they're disclosing the benzene and the letting of the local property area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I I don't know. And is that, was that a disclosure item?
I think uh, any known defect would have to be disclosed.
On your property.
But, well, right on your own property.
It's pretty public data at this point.
Right, and it's, and it's, and it's public and.
Don't do any independent testing on your property.
Well, that's not an excuse that you won't get it, you won't get away with that.
But all to say, I I think less fence is generally better if people are willing. I will say some of the feedback was, if I recall, some people wanted a fence because they want to protect their properties from whoever is walking by on the walking path sort of thing. Also a fair perspective. So I, I'm kind of one way or the other on that.
You would have to disclose where your property line is if you did go to somewhere else. You couldn't, you know, have a big wide open backyard with a shed forty feet back and not disclose when your property disclosure that your line doesn't go back.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely aware of that. I, I mean, I I generally don't.
Unless it tells you who's willing to, uh, you know, sort of.
sort of readjust the uh, landlines and.
Well, let's have them look at it. I mean, like I said, it's not feasible to have the existing fence line, like that's a third of the property, it's just um, everyone's gotta give up a little bit here. Um, you know, there's we're getting it from the other side too, because the other side has been using part of the property to park for so long where it's like, feels like theirs too, you know.
Yeah.
But um, you can look at it, well, they had pre-parking for a while, you know, uh, versus, you know, being taken away. So, but like I said, I will advocate, I am advocating for um, just the nature of that. Uh, even if you knew where your property line were, there's just such a small amount of yard there. I get, you've kind of gotten used to, used to that. So I, I think there's enough room there to to build something that's a nice, nice happy meeting.
Yes.
And we'll pass the architects a little bit.
And and to their tree point, I mean, I would guess the part of the process would be that we would get an arborist in, look at the trees on the site, which are the good trees, which are the bad trees, which are the ones we wanna save.
Once you get, get out, so. Do that, it costs us a little bit of money, but at least then you'd know whether you're you're taking down specimen trees or you're taking down essentially weed trees.
And it's in an area where that's feasible, right? Cause it's not like we're designing something right in that area, that's just trees and berms anyway. But we also have to, the cap's an issue.
Yeah, the cap's an issue.
Cause you're still gonna be burying it, the tree's gonna live. So are we spending more money to take it down a year from now to dead? I don't know.
Right.
I'm not an expert, but.
But an arborist could help us determine that, yes.
Yeah.
May I also, um, my my inclination on the courts is, is maybe instead of a court, some other accessible play space that has slopes. And I think they gave us a few examples of interesting slopes play spaces that are accessible and hard surface, but not maybe a full court surface. And um, I did ask if there was a design that could move the the field itself like further into the corner away from the neighbors as a possibility, just to to keep the 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 ruckus on one side of the field um, and and quiet it down to neighbors, cause that side has more industrial use. Um, I I'm okay with this design, just saying if there was a way to to do it.
I think there's room to.
For future, the future benefit of park users and future neighbors now and into the future. Um, cause we get a lot of those calls, of course, at Parks and Rec about how close the field fields and playing spaces next to homes. Uh, but not that I'm anti-court, I'm just, I'm just thinking the feedback was the courts right now don't get much utility in town and it, I also, also was thinking about um, maintenance, is it, you know, ongoing maintenance? Is that a lot of money to to consider if we're maintaining some specialized courts? I don't know. So those are, those are my inclinations after reading everyone's feedback.
Anyone else?
And not to um, uh, complicate the matter, Mike. But as we uh, as we explore the uh, connector piece um, down at the park.
Phase two.
At the other end, yeah, phase two. Uh, you know, kind of look at this as sort of a a corridor of recreation. Um, and so, you know, the idea of trying to fit all the amenities in that one spot, we we could conceivably look toward the hard work, like some sort of other amenity down at the other end, the end of that trail in the future as a way, again, with the thought being that, you know, this is gonna be an area that people are gonna be utilizing, walking along that path on the golf course and kind of the the barbell of the two patients, so. Um, you know, I I like the idea too of some of these amenities might ending up elsewhere at another point.
Good point.
Yeah, Sandy Run Park.
Yeah, connect it into Sandy Run Park.
Yeah, he's referring to, we have hopes and dreams of connecting Sandy Run Park over the Sandy Run and then under the Septa rail corridor there, rail, tunnel, uh, to get to the Penn Manor development and connect to that trail system that goes over into the P S A C preserve and over in Upper Dublin.
And the the walking trail next to the golf course was phase one of that. Basically connect Orlando to be able to complete that entire, you can get over there. Okay, alright, so from here, we're gonna give the architects more feedback, the committee more feedback. We'll take another bite of the apple and uh, keep it going. Where, where, what's our timeline in terms of us settling on a design and and go into the next phase?
So I think Port would like to get some additional direction and try and wrap this up.
Yeah.
Yep. Good.
And then our next meeting with them should conclude their contract with us, right?
I think that's the way it's worded. You've been kind of running that grant. So you've been kind of running that grant, does that sound right? They wanna, once they're done, they they present the final plan.
Then we'll go ahead and go over the darn thing first again.
And they're about, what, eighty percent full? I think so.
Okay.
For what it's worth, I also at some point had thought that this area would have been great for that skate park idea that the neighborhood was uh, floating around for some time. Um, I'm not sure that ever came out in fruition, but just for those who thought about it, it wasn't not thought of. Um, but I'm not sure that ever came into the conversation. For those who are dreaming that still. I was looking at Ed specifically.
Pick lips, I'm all about it.
Alright, great, thank you. Um, I know folks came in a little bit later, um, any particular topics you guys are?
Uh, one of the last, the last day.
Yep, okay. Alright, any other public comment before we get into the rest of our agenda? Alright, great.
Thank you.
Alright, why don't we do the um, the uh, the equipment?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Alright, so we're gonna do the landscape equipment, uh, tab K. And basically, there's a couple pieces of equipment that township needs to replace. And after shopping and looking at the pros and cons, the recommendation from our fleet supervisor was to of the three that we need to buy, buy one electric. Sort of like a test run, but for the uh, the other two, by the guest units. For two reasons, one, it's significantly cost less and two, um, I felt like the um, capacity wasn't quite there yet. So that's what has been asked of us to consider.
Did, did Public Works uh, test out these units?
Yeah, in fact, you can test that one.
Oh, okay, good.
Oh boy, I didn't see those.
And Mike, while we're on the topic of this, um, I saw that Upper Dublin was doing a trial program.
They are heavy, that's one of the considerations that their concern went, I'm sorry.
I saw that Upper Dublin was doing a trial program uh, on a new way of collecting cardboard.
How's that?
Um, I I guess in response.
Segregated from.
Yeah, I guess in response to increased volume and deliveries of cardboard in general. They uh, are doing a pile program, the new way of picking up uh, cardboard. My only question was, do we see an impact locally in our services? Cause they cited injuries from some of the workers, delays.
One of the reasons that they're doing it is you're aware they have automated collection. So if it doesn't fit in that container, they're not picking it up.
Right.
Um, a lot of people were putting the cardboard on the side, wasn't getting into the container, wasn't getting picked up, they were getting complaints, they had to send a second truck out to pick it up.
So we're good.
Yeah, because we pick everything up as one in a rear loader. Um, but there is a, a benefit to doing that, um, although it's more costly because you're sending out twice the amount of trucks. Um, but there is revenue to be had from the the cardboard development. That's bringing in pretty good money. That's the other component to it.
Didn't we do really well last year? I remember that was a conversation piece.
Our.
Our cardboard was very clean.
Yes, our.
Our waste, our, our, yeah, it is.
Yeah, we were, had the lowest residue of all the communities in the consortium.
Cause we let our dogs lick the peanut butter jars.
Well, we also have workers who are there where they put it into the truck, they kind of like police it for contaminants. So if it's, you know, it's a garden hose, it's not gonna go into our truck, but if somebody shoves that into their, you know, recycling container and the the one-armed band that comes along and dumps it, they don't know what's going in there. So.
And there's no sorting it once it's in their truck, right?
Not once, not until you get to the curb.
Yeah.
That's what happens.
So we're good. My, my product, you don't anticipate us, uh.
Yeah, we're at, right at the the brink of being able to get done our Monday, Tuesday routes, which are the longest routes and getting them that's some works on summer help employee. And I don't know if he's been on the truck this, this year or not, but um, they just about get over to the recycling plant before it closes, uh, before the end of the day. So, um, it's, uh, yeah, we're, we're at that point, we had a significant, more amount of volumes, um, we, we might have to consider breaking it apart. Um, but we're okay for the moment.
But it wouldn't require investment of a new vehicle, it would just be a time management.
We have the additional vehicles, it would be additional uh, manpower. You'd have to put another drive, you could probably split the two laborers on the back, but you'd be putting another truck out and the fuel that goes along with that and the driver for another vehicle. We did it years ago in that.
But you'd get more money for your recycling.
You would, you're still gonna lose money, but.
Yeah, but you, you lose less.
Still get a little taste.
Right.
Aaron, you wanna?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, thanks. Um, so Aaron Stumpfowitz, I'm the chairperson of the E A C. Um, I guess I'll just give a, just a quick overview of sort of what the E A C has done with regard to landscape landscaping equipment, specifically electric leaf blowers, cause I think that's.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, back over the winter, we just, we distributed.
See, I can go on your chair.
Yeah.
Could you skateboard with that, Eddie?
Maybe. So we distributed a survey asking more broadly, a broad question about whether or not um, that, you know, township residents would be supportive of some sort of ordinance limiting or restricting uh, gas leaf power blower use.
But just commercial then?
Just commercial, not residential, that was the idea of the survey, just to get some feedback. Um, we had actually over eight hundred responses, which was significantly more than what we got for even the uh, plastic bag issue. Um, the plurality opinion of the folks uh, was that they wanna see uh, like significant restrictions on gas leaf blowers for a wide variety of reasons. Um, one thing we did in the survey is we included a comment box so that people could leave additional feedback. Um, and so I went through and collated all of that information. I should have used A I is what I should have done, but I didn't, I did it by hand. And uh, three of the biggest concerns for folks who were opposed to an ordinance were one, capabilities, um, two, uh, price for like what their landscaping is gonna cost. And three, well, what about the landscapers themselves? Is that gonna hurt, is that, is that gonna hurt the landscapers themselves? So we took that feedback, uh, us with a, along with a coalition of other townships um, got together and we co-sponsored uh, and the A C helped co-sponsor an event that's taking place eight days from now, June seventeenth at the Livingston Library in Bryn Mawr. And it's being run by a landscaping trade organization, certified trade organization called A G Z A. And they're gonna have maybe six different manufacturers of electric equipment there to provide folks with like a uh, a, both a, like in-building description of like what their capabilities are, what the costs are, what the R O I is. And then later an outdoor demonstration of the equipment itself, so people can go and actually test, you know, test the equipment. Um, it's only open to commercial um, companies, landscaping companies and uh, government entities. So I would highly, highly, highly suggest that before making any decisions on what equipment to buy, have a representative from the township go to this workshop that we helped co-sponsor that uh, is specifically designed to tell, to to give an idea of both what the costs are, what the capabilities are before making a final decision, one way or the other.
What's the date on that?
June seventeenth, uh, nine AM. I think I emailed uh, Ian, uh, Mr. Hammer uh, about this a while ago. I'm not sure if the date had changed since then, but uh, I'll, I'll make sure to reach back out and make sure everyone's well aware of uh, of, you know, of this event. I mean, it's, it's a long event, it goes from nine till like one, so it's, it's and they've gotten so far really good feedback. Um, there's really, they were gonna, they were hoping to be able to open up to some public to sign up, but I don't think there's gonna be room for like, and it's all commercial grade equipment anyways, so there's very limited sort of usefulness for the public to attend. Um, I'm hoping to be able to go, uh, we'll just see how it works with my schedule. Um, and that would be, I mean, obviously the township's aware of the letter from September of twenty twenty-three um, indicating of their, their desire, it wasn't, you know, not mandated, but their desire to transition to electric landscaping equipment where feasible is basically where the, where that letter came down. I encourage folks to read that letter again. Um, I'm happy to provide a copy of it, but.
They have it in their book.
They got it in the book. Oh, is it part of the material? Okay, great.
That's why we're here, because we have not bought anything since.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But we're at a point now where we need to replace these things.
Yes.
So before our fleet supervisor jumped in headfirst.
Yeah.
He contacted Light Cap, right? Like they're the supplier that we've used for like the last thirty years. Uh, they deal in commercial equipment. And he said, alright, you know, I I need to replace these pieces of equipment. Um, two string trimmers, two backpack blowers, where are we? He said, let me get the Echo guy in. So the Echo sales representative, manufacturer's representative came in, sat down with them, went through all the equipment, that's how we got the demo piece right here. Um, he said, I'm gonna be honest with you. Um, the string trimmers, pretty good, it's lighter weight, um, it's good, it's got straw backs and it's challenges, but it's, it's a lot closer than the backpack blowers. Backpack blowers aren't there yet, right? Their runtime is low, they're very, very costly. Um, and there's a weight issue there. Um, Pete picked up this one. And, and part of the problem is where the weight is distributed right now, it's, it's up real high. Yeah. So like, to wear it around this building a couple minutes like Ed did, not so bad, but to wear it for hours all day long, like I, I'm just concerned about back injuries with our guys, like leaning back like this, particularly smaller people, that's a pretty big guy, pretty built guy. Um, and then there's the cost issue, right? Like, you know, that, while we're right there, as it sits there, is about fifteen hundred ninety-nine dollars. The other one right there is about four hundred dollars.
Yeah, so what I'll add on that is we've done quite a bit of research on ROI.
Right, the ROI. So there, apparently you get nine hundred charges um, battery, right? Like regardless of whether the battery is fifty percent right now or it's at zero, nine hundred times in that thing, and then it's shot, you gotta get a new one.
Right.
Um, so I mean, there's a challenge there and fuel savings, right? Like commercial landscapers are buying it at retail prices. We're buying it without any of the state taxes added on to it. So we've spent about three hundred and fifty dollars this year on fuel. I can see a landscaper spending a whole lot more. Um, that's one battery pack.
Right.
So, I mean, we're not saying no forever.
Yeah, yeah.
Saying, I'm not sure that it's there right now.
I would encourage you, I would encourage to get, cause there's lots of different designs for like hit mounted versus backpack mounted, there's like lots of different configurations. Again, I would encourage you to go there and see other manufacturers just than, other than the, just the one that you guys got to see. Because they're gonna give the whole rundown of the whole gambit of, of options and uh, so in any case, I would highly recommend before any sort of decision you made, have someone go out there, test everything out there rather than, you know, make a decision based on sort of what you have.
How do they, and you know, and maybe this is a fair question for after we attended, see, cause we went to a, a P R P S webinar that we all went to, like they, they put it together for everybody. Um, how do they deal with the runtime issue and charging up the batteries during the daytime?
Yeah, it's a good question. I, I don't know exactly, like, like, uh, as far as like if you need multiple batteries and then you, you know, you sequentially use them. Um, or if you have like a charging unit on the truck, I forget, we had the demonstration with Toro and I'm trying to remember.
Charging a truck.
I think they had charging on the truck.
Was it a diesel generator? Did they have like a solar array on the trail?
I, I don't remember if it was actually a built-in battery on the, like a, like a, like a skateboard style battery, sort of like a car almost. I, I, but I don't, I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Um, more general question, I think um, related to the leaf blower specifically, I think the string, the the string trimmer looks like that's an easy win.
It's a doer greater.
Um, related to leaf blowing in general, what I've received, and maybe Aaron can confirm, and what I, what I read in light research is that there's a desire to reduce leaf blowing in general because of environmental concerns, because the utility of leaf blowing is all. Because of environmental concerns, because the utility of leaf blowing is almost. For in some people's views, purely aesthetic.
It's health concerns for the workers too.
Of course, health concerns for the workers. I mean, all sorts of reasons why leaf blowing reduction is uh, desired. And then I think that increased because over particularly over COVID, people got to stay home. And and really heard the noise of the day sort of thing. And it was, it is a lot in some some places where it's just consistently happening. Um, so I think my general question is, you know, how much leaf blowing we need to do? And can we ascertain that we actually could do less leaf blowing in general and maybe not be able to transition to an electric one? Uh, per se, but maybe reduce our leaf blowing needs or demands as an alternative environmental savings.
But you still have like grass clippings and things that you gotta blow back onto the. The grass and everything. So you, I mean, you're not gonna eliminate them altogether.
Right.
And and during the the fall, we do use, like we have gator blades that we put on our lawnmowers that we use them to like kind of mulch them up in place rather than picking them up. But in some parks, it's so thick that, you know, you have to do, you have to pick them up.
Just making the inquiry to determine if that's a possibility, because that's where the. The those who are advocating for this, that's the genesis of of what it is, is trying to reduce leaf blowing usage in general. And can we models of that? If we're going to theoretically even ever inquire, enter a conversation of reduction in in general.
I I will add also, Philadelphia is now committed, I think. Waiting on the latest to actually transitioning off gas leaf blowers in the entire county. So it's not like this is an impossible thing. Um, it's and. Montgomery County, Maryland. There's there's actually, there's numerous locations that.
And entirely for commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a noise issue though, isn't it?
Yeah, so you're looking at like a twenty decibel level difference between gas and electric. I mean, it's not insignificant. It's it's that's like what like. Twenty thirty-ish percent uh, reduction in noise. So. Um, anyways, just wanted to make make sure the commission was aware of all that. Um, we're highly supportive of of that sort of transition and like to the extent the commissioners have any questions would like us to do. Any additional background research? We have resources to do so. We have subcommittee on the EAC working on this stuff and we're happy to produce material. There's a large working group in our area that's very dedicated to this. We attend like weekly meetings. From uh, and involves EACs from across all the different townships who are all collectively thinking about how to address this. Uh, you know, address this concern, which is pretty broadly held. Um, anyways, thanks.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Um, quick question. What was that question? Um, that our our supplier that we. How many different brands do they carry? Do they just have the one line?
No, I think they have a couple of different ones. Echo was probably the most widely known one though.
Yeah.
I know there's a backpack that we have a red reader or something like that. I think that's.
Um, and then how urgent are these? And are we doing blowing right now?
Well, I think the guys come to Gene daily and say, you know, we need a backpack blower. We need this, we need that. And so, you know, again, we haven't bought anything in. You know.
How many hours per day for a backpack move back? Lower, uh, blower? Do you? Do we have it like, what are they at? Six hours of?
They don't have hour meters on them. Otherwise I could give you a better number, like the mowers do. But the the the, you know, the small handheld equipment doesn't have a an hour meter on it. Um, but I mean. They're out from seven o'clock in the morning and they they work through lunch in the summer because of the heat and they get out at two thirty and they're. They pretty much go straight through. So they're jumping from job site to job site. There's a little bit of transit time, but we're not a giant municipality. So I I I would think that it's pretty close to.
Even if it's three or four hours, we're gonna three battery changes.
Oh, it's it's definitely five hours for sure. If not, you're not getting your money's worth out.
So given that this thing is next week, and I don't know, someone can attend or even just connect with the six different. Suppliers that are going, is it worth just? Doing a sanity check on some other suppliers is something significantly better. And if it's not, it's not. I mean, at this point, you know, I don't want to. Go against the recommendations.
Well, I mean, we can send somebody. I I mean, then then we're gonna run into unless there the other suppliers or the other manufacturers have them. Price significantly less costly, then we're gonna run up against a budget issue. Because, you know, the technology is far more expensive on an upfront basis, even if you can get it back through an ROI. You know, you're gonna have to decide whether you wanna. Find that money somewhere else or or what? Because we've only got a certain amount budgeted for the replacements.
Right.
And that includes accumulated funds that we, you know, covered over the last couple of years.
Do you need us to vote on anything or is this just guidance?
I mean, we like direction to start replacing some of the stuff, but like, you know, we can hold off for a week, you know, in the hopes that we find something significantly better.
Well, here's the. Gather the information. If the information comes back that it's not significantly better, we've done our due diligence, we've gathered information, it was an informed decision. Does it feel like a week is reasonable?
I agree with that. So why don't we say we agree with the recommendation pending if we can do a little better. This thing is next Tuesday, right?
Yeah, next Tuesday. I think Steel Husqvarna, Crest, Makita, Greenworks and Eco Robotics are the six that are gonna be there. Yeah, he goes one of the.
So check that out next week and by the end of the, by the end of next week. You what, yourself?
I'm a steel man.
A steel man.
Because ECO is different than than EGO, right? The uh. Residential one?
EGO, yeah.
Yeah, that's residential.
And for the benefit of listeners, can we just clarify that in this conversation that we had, we're talking about commercial and usable. These things, I know that there was like, we're, you know, what are you telling us to do with our residential? Um, equipment, nothing. Just talking about decisions being made.
This isn't, this doesn't involve no mome, okay?
We're not. We're just talking to the township. Yeah, he just mentioned the the survey, but we're not talking about the actual. You know, potential organs.
I I did want to share it, like if there was something we could do to reduce our usage and just be more mindful of our gas blower usage. That's a note to be taken back to public works. Just can we do a little less? Do we really need to blow the very last two inch blade off?
Aaron, can I ask you a question? Where are you aware of any commercial companies? I remember there was an article you acquired about a company in Conchi. Or do you know of any commercial landscapers who have totally made the switch?
Yeah, there are, there are a couple. Um. I don't remember off the top of my head. There's two on the main line and one of them. Their service territory is up to Chestnut Hill. And I was like, you want to come? Another couple of blocks coming to my house. Um, but but right now, and I forget who they were. Um, I know. Penn's campus um, employs an all-electric landscaping company. It's all-electric there. Hunter Drexel, one of the two. I forget which. Is it Penn? Yeah. Um, and I know Norveth, sorry.
Including.
Yes, yes. Norveth Public Works, all-electric. Uh, they're obviously much smaller than than you guys are. I actually talked to the head of the public works. He used to be on the commercial side of things. And he said, I've in the two or three years that they've had electric equipment, he's spent twenty dollars in maintenance. And one of it was because they like dropped one of the pieces of equipment and they had to like take something out. So, you know, all things to consider.
Cool, thanks. All right, we good on that?
We're good on that.
Right? You have any other preferences for where we go next?
And like, just because, uh. I know we kind of work in a little bit of silo. Do you have to talk to the school district and and see if they've ever explored the software or look into it?
Not the school district, but Gene did contact White Marsh, Upper Dublin and Abington. And not just to see if they have any experience, good or bad, anything. And none of them have any of them at the moment.
Oh, school district looked at it or explored it.
Yeah, I haven't. White Marsh does have the an electric mower, like zero turn. And and I don't know what the. Good, bad or indifferent is other than it's got like shear pins on it so that like when you hit something, they shear off. So, you know. One of our mowers, it'll chip the blade or bend the blade, whatever. But um, I think that does. Pretty significant damage to the electric motor. So they're like shear pins that just like break off. So. Apparently they have bags of them that they carry around with them and switch them around. So that was the only real feedback on that that I think you guys.
All right, great. Let's jump to the book. All right, tape A is the uh, request for slight increase in police towing service fees. Pretty minor. We're still through at the bottom end of what those would. Would cost. Um, you want to have any feedback or objections on any of that?
Yeah, Chief Pico did a survey and you you have the results of that in there. And we're we're just proposing to put them up right where pretty much everyone else is or right in the middle. Uh, there's a couple of outliers, but we're right in the middle. We don't have all that much, like heavy truck towing. Um, yeah. One is Concha Hocken, those guys, you know, they have, we're, they have a lot of it over there, White Marsh even. Uh, but. Not that big of a deal here.
And these keys are absorbed by the vehicle owner.
Correct. Or the insurance carrier. It's like a crash.
Is it mostly from a accident or the car's unable to move?
Most of the time, yeah.
It's not because of violation or abandoned or something. Block you driveway or park.
No, 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 no. I mean, it could be a DUI. It it could be, most likely it's a crash. That's where it's involved. Or if they're, you know, disabled and they're in a really bad spot, we'll call in the tow company to get them out.
Building off of our conversation last week with the the ball fields, I was saying, we tripled these and have them just. Pull them out. Yeah, unleash help.
Send the record.
All right, so that'll be a motion on.
All right, next item is the report of the township manager, Mr. Taylor.
All right, so I'll go through this quickly as I can for you. Local services tax, just giving you an FYI that a couple of very forward-thinking members of the House of Representatives has. Circulated a bill to increase the local services tax. Apparently it's capped at a dollar a week or fifty-two dollars a year. Um, it would increase the cap to as much as uh, a hundred and fifty-six dollars a year or three dollars a week. It doesn't have to be all or nothing as written, but we'll see where that goes. Uh, you can see in there the township, uh, we're projecting three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in receipts this year. If it were to triple, you would triple that number, so.
But we would, that just gives the ability to triple.
The ability to.
Right now, it's capped at that one percent or one dollar.
One dollar, yes. You'd have to affirmatively take that action. If it passes.
When, when was that first put in place?
Not that long ago.
Well, we didn't enact it. We enacted it not that long ago. Yes. Prior to that, it was just considered a nuisance tax because it wasn't even a dollar a week. It was like a occupational privilege tax.
Um, it's still a nuisance tax.
You spend more money collecting it.
It says the retiree that doesn't have to pay it, right?
Exactly. Well, taxes are nuisance.
Well, there's economies of scale because our income tax collector collects it and like the fee is pretty nominal. When it was the occupational privilege tax, it was, it was, you're right. It was a definite nuisance tax. Uh, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, Tim talked about that. That's the sanitary sewer I and I project that's going on. Um, smoke alarms. There's a little. Yeah, no, we didn't. I I think I mentioned to you that if it was on a major roadway, we would definitely put something out there and ask people to avoid the area. Um, but because it's in like a small residential area, the people who are impacted are getting direct notification, uh, hand delivered to them.
It's such a long time. That's the only reason. If it was just for a short amount of time, but all the way until February season.
Well, that's the, that's the entire project, um, soup to nuts with final restoration. They have to. I imagine the the heavy excavation work will probably be a matter of a few weeks in each neighborhood. But then the trench has to settle, then they have to come back and they have to re-excavate and uh. Restore it and then the final overlay is gonna happen after that.
They mentioned that they're going to uh. Scope the individual private.
Yes, the.
Lateral. To to what end? I mean, are they gonna then share that information with the homeowner?
I think if there's a problem, I'll probably share it with the homeowner. I don't know what they plan to do after that, whether they will make the repairs. Or whether they're gonna put them on notice that they have to make a repair.
That might be a good idea to flush that one out just to, so that people know what's coming.
Unintended. Uh, smoke alarms. There's a flyer in your book, um, packed the fall and the fire marshal. Uh, would like to try and make smoke detectors available to families in need. Um, he's already obtained a grant from PICO in the amount of four hundred dollars and he'd like to know if it'd be all right. Um, to develop a program whereby he might approach some of the businesses in town for donations and then maybe like did hope or or. Give them a shout out on some capacity that they donate to it. It's not something we've done in the past, other than like the concerts in the parks. They're sponsored by people. Uh, businesses on occasion. Uh, they'll say, you know, like, um. I don't know, the Indelible Groove sponsored by Dan Helwig Realtors or something like that. Uh, so if you're okay with it, you'd like to continue in that down that path. If you don't like the idea for whatever reason, to let them know to stick to Pico and stick to. Wherever else you can find. Indelible Groove.
Is that real?
That's a real one.
Was he also gonna ask TD Bank?
Uh, I think he did ask TD Bank. And and he had to fill out a lot of paperwork for them, but it just hasn't. I think we have a pretty good chance of getting it. It just hasn't been approved yet.
Okay, and um, what about the Red Cross?
Uh, I think the Red Cross has a program, but I think the Red Cross. Installs them themselves.
Yes, they do.
Yes, so they don't do partnerships by which they would just donate.
But it is free.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good program. It's in Philadelphia. I'm not sure it's in suburban.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I know it's in Philadelphia.
I have a little concern in that, and I was gonna ask you, is there any other instances where the township is soliciting? Sponsorships for something and you just said it with with the concerts. But also I know in our conversations about. Community Day, and we really didn't want to get into a position of asking businesses. You know, you're having the entity that regulates you asking for donations.
Yep.
Um, and it creates a. You know, a dynamic that I don't know is entirely healthy. That the people say yes, because they don't, they want to be on the good side of township, you know, so it's kind of like a punk.
Would he be soliciting on behalf of the township or on behalf of? Winmore Park?
No, he in his capacity as the fire marshal, he would be doing it.
Yeah, so I thought.
But he but he could do it.
He could do it. But at the same time, the fire companies are already soliciting and they're and they're not doing great, just as a general rule. Um, so to to put an extra burden on them.
What about soliciting from um. Businesses in Springfield that are like, like the um, Iquawa and Giant that have.
Like foundations.
Yeah.
TD, big, big, not local businesses. They're probably already sponsoring Little League and a million things. It's hard enough to make money as a small business and now you're. I know, being asked to give more.
Okay, so try and limit it to the those larger corporations with foundations or, you know.
Yeah, perhaps start there and see what we get.
Existing charitable arm or whatever it may be.
Yeah. Yes, a lot of them do have those community partnership, you know, um, offices that. Someone that they can direct them right to that works for Iquawa, works for Giant.
Surely all the banks do.
All the banks.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that. Big enough that they're not.
Okay, yeah, yes. All right, that's fine. That's good. Oh, it's good feedback. Pennsylvania Avenue, just an update. Um, you'll recall a few months ago, the board authorized. Uh, partnership with Upper Dublin and the traffic engineer that they engaged to do a study of Pennsylvania Avenue. Uh, to try and improve the pedestrian connectivity between the two townships. Came principally out of the Upper Dublin side and focused have a desire to get across to the train station. Um, so uh, we had had met with Upper Dublin once very early on to set sort of a informal scope. This most recent meeting was more of an update on their initial sidewalk gap analysis study. Uh, they looked at pedestrian ADA ramps and those types of things and where they need to be upgraded, the traffic signal at um. Ridge Street needs to be, it's in dire need of being updated. The traffic signal at, um, Ridge Street needs to be, it's in dire need of being updated. Uh, they also had some other ideas that are kind of out of the box to see if they can maybe slow down traffic a little bit. Um, and maybe make it a little bit more attractive for crossing. So that they're gonna share some of those, uh, concepts with Pendot and then meet back up with us. Um, after they have done that and hopefully come up with a cost estimate that we can share. They broke it up into three different sections. Um, that I'll call it the far end by twining road and then there's a middle section uh, by Bridge Street and then there's a lower section, um, that extends down to the trail crossing at, uh, former Mill Road, so.
And all group is the township style?
Well, so, the answer is if, if, if you could find a project like the Bethlehem Pike project where Pendot was going to be getting ready to build and overlay the street, which unfortunately they just did. Uh, they would probably consider the restriping, uh, one of the proposals, uh, as part of the, yeah, project. Uh, but at this point, it'd probably be something that we would chase down funds, yeah, grant funds. Um, through their upper dominance traffic engineer, uh, who's been very instrumental in getting a lot of grant money for them, particularly for their office park. I don't know if you saw all the work that they're doing over at Fort Washington. They'll control.
Who was they specifically?
Bowles Smythe.
And this was, uh, they, Upper Dublin for that engineering study?
We split it.
Yeah, we split it with them.
We each got a spoon.
Uh, the Little League parking concerns, uh, just a little update there. Um, after your meeting last month where we heard from folks from Blashear Avenue and Trinmore Avenue, I reached out to the presidents of both uh, about the concerns. They both very quickly acknowledged my email and the concerns of the board. Um, and they, they pledged to do better. Um, haven't heard anything from the Blashear Avenue resident. I don't think Craig has.
It's continued to be more, I was there yesterday, so.
Trinmore, no news to me. I don't know about Ed, but we did write twenty-two parking tickets up there this past month.
Lots, lots of tickets were written, uh, neighbors were appreciative. Uh, I think the, um, larger reason for the cessation of the issue is that the league season's, uh, so I don't know what the result of the traffic study are yet. Uh, I think they might be pending, but uh, there was some concern that the study was done when it was a rainy day and there were no games though.
Dude, does the softball, are they still, do they have like a postseason tournament stuff like the, who's Little League does?
I, I, there was some money on the field today, but I don't think it's.
So I don't, I don't know that the game is, that the season is entirely over because I heard from uh, the president of that group today and they put out a, another call for parking attendant. Um, and kind of revised the, the scope of services for that individual, what they're responsible for. So that leads me to believe that there's still some games remaining.
So I think the in-house season is over where you have all the neighborhood or the, all the Springfield Township team playing there, that's one. But the summer team is just like a team and you might have teams from other.
Okay.
Places.
Travel team.
Travel team, correct, so.
The boys have the, the tournament teams.
Basically the tournament team where the, um, the usage would be as high.
Did you mention for future reference, its potential or possibility of hiring in detail for the future?
I put that into, well, I may have alluded to that. I don't think I put that out there.
Well, we have, we have time to talk, we have time.
Share with that, she wordsmithed it for me.
Less of a threat at that point.
But they did get access, the, the softball did get access to the, uh, Churchill Paper Mill Road Fields. Um, so I know that they, I've seen more games there.
I was there tonight.
That's good.
My daughter's playing everything.
Yeah, once the school season's over, they're really like, you know, right?
Yeah, but they also don't really maintain them either.
Once the season.
Yeah, once the season ends, they sort of stop all their work.
It's always, it's always weird seeing the little tiny one at Enfield, right on the corner, how it just gets over their own.
Yeah.
That summer.
Sad.
They need to hire some goats.
Uh, public safety committee, do you want to take that one?
Uh, sure. Um, so we've been kicking around for a long time, just the, um, the idea of what it might look like to have a public safety committee, basically a sort of landing spot for both the public and, um, the police to have a, a place to to communicate and do community outreach and sort of like on a formal basis and um, just taking a couple iterations of just thought, you know, is it something the committee should do and it's not a township or a commissioner thing or, you know? And so we, we, Susan and I met and just circled back on it. I feel like there would be some pretty good, um, buy-in, you know, not just from the public, from the police department to have something like this. Um, even if it's something that's like a quarterly sort of community offering, each place, um, where people can.
Is it be the issue that what the cops already do?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, they don't really do anything formally with us in terms of community.
Oh, with us, oh, I see.
From a committee standpoint. But, you know, look, I mean, our police departments are, I think are, you know, greatest percentage of our budget. It's a, it's a huge part of our, of our township. Probably the one area that doesn't have a public facing committee where, where it is public facing, Public Works isn't really public facing in that the service, it's kind of like a one-way service. There might be some requests or complaints or something, but it's not really, really much of an interaction. You know, whereas we have Parks and Rec, obviously a lot of collaboration on that and public feedback, so. So we kicked around some ideas and structure and all that, nothing set in stone or even if people are on board with it, but uh, we just wanted to bring that, that, sort of bring that up as a discussion point again.
Yeah, and I would just add to it that it would be a space for transparent conversations and visibility for, for all those concerns that so often touch the police in many different directions, whether they come from, um, actual interactions with the police or they're more general things like even this traffic issue that I think oftentimes people are reticent to kind of make the concern known as a police issue, but oftentimes it really is a police, not issue, but a, an intersectionality where they can explain, for example, their enforcement regimen and, and all those type of issues that often come directly here, but then we end up having to phone back to the police and say, hey, get back to us in a month or two months. Um, you know, it could be a space that can regularly occur and discuss, uh, holistic, uh, you know, perspectives on that. It could be as, you know, as low to get started as quarterly, but it could also, you know, be a space where you're making that general now. So what are the issues of the day influencing and where are they happening for beauty that quarter? Right? So let's say, an example I know is probably pretty common, not just here, but anywhere is, hey, it's summertime. Um, it's gonna be an increase in uptick of, of folks breaking in and specifically we've seen an increase in this. And, and that kind of more casual discussion about these type of police behaviors in a public space that people rely for information and reliable information directly from police and gives them a chance to, um, speak on their own uh, what the challenges they are, whatever. Have we assessed, um, interest on their behalf in terms of them feeling like this could serve them well? I was just gonna say, I think the, my, my request, other than the fact that I, I think that residents would like to have such a space from as long as we're in alignment, this is something you want to do, the next step would be to acquire and say, hey, you know, what are, what are your concerns about this community and, and what benefits can you perceive? So that we can format it accordingly to benefit both parties, both the beauty members and the government itself in general. Including the frequency, including, uh, who would serve on that and the stat we presented, how much it would cost, because there would be a prospect of there's officers who would have to look at, be ready, um, to get them insight. But I think what Mike wants to know is, do we agree that we want to do it?
I would, I would want to under, better understand a clear definition of what it is. You know, is it an oversight committee? Is it a?
No. Yeah, I don't think oversight's supposed. Well, that already exists, so I think we'd have to be really clear about that, right? That the Police Civil Service Commission exists for oversight. So that, I, am I, in terms of?
And could, I mean, does, does that provide the space for what you're discovering like?
No, because that's not a public meeting, right? So if, uh, if I understand the, um, desire here, it's to create a public facing space for transparent conversation and partnership. And the, the Civil Service Commission is a space that's not public facing. And they're appointed members, right? But they're closed meetings, not open to the public, and that is particularly around the issues that require oversight.
They're, they're actually advertised, but nobody ever.
So they're, because they're, they're limited scope.
Well, all these years.
It's such a limited scope of what you can and can't do.
Yes.
So here's a question for you. What mechanism is in place now? So, see, if I wanted to say, uh, without going to township manager, I want to talk to my police force about, okay, what is our rule around how far we can park from a corner? What is the mechanism? Call the police station, call nine-one-one or call the information number and asking somebody and waiting for a call back?
You, you can do it in a couple of different ways. If you want an immediate answer right then and there, you can call two one five eight three six, you know, sixteen hundred, which will go to the nine-one-one dispatch center. And they'll answer, nine-one-one, what is your emergency? And you can say, it's not an emergency, but I have a question. I'd like to speak with an officer. An officer will come out. You can get an answer that way. If you feel like that's inappropriate to do because it doesn't rise to that level of need, call the next day, talk to the traffic safety officer. Your first person you're gonna talk to is Katie on the front desk. She's the police specialist. She's gonna route you to the traffic safety individual, traffic safety officer, and then, you know, you'll talk to one of them.
Yeah, that was just one example.
And if the traffic safety officer's not in, you can always speak to either the lieutenant or the chief of police.
Where you come here targets.
Pete? Yeah, um, so I, I think we talked about this like a couple of years ago, talked about something like, what it, and it would be something that's not an oversight board or anything with any type of power. I think it's more of the idea, at least from the community member, like myself and other community members that have had discussions about this kind of stuff. I mean, we've got infrequent and informal ways to talk to the police, like coffee with a cop, that type of thing. Not necessarily a forum where you want to bring up some certain questions and things like that. Um, and I think to the point of going to call the police and get, you know, nine-one-one, it's not, you know, it's like, well, no, it's, 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 I just want to be able to come ask questions. I think it's something that can, to the other committees that we have, like EAC and Parks and Rec and things like that. It provides that forum to talk to somebody with direct knowledge around those things that talk to the police and just understand some things. I know there's questions and stuff that I've had, you know, with different things or just want to know about or understand more of that, right? I've gotten some more of that because they published some more information and things like that through the township website, which is great. But there's still that other interaction. There's things that I think the community would have questions or have that kind of forum to kind of understand that. And if you got a committee of, of officers and then of residents made up, right? That kind of softens things to be like, okay, I can come here as a safe space and be able to ask some questions or be able to raise up some concerns in, in a way that I think is, you know, as opposed to even going to like police department, right? Walking in those doors and, you know, having them there, that's, you know, can be overwhelming for people or can be like, you know, I just want to know something, right?
Yeah.
So I think that's more along the lines of what at least the community and stuff that we've been talking about and what I'd like to see more of. I think a lot of what they've been doing has been great, you know, in, in terms of that within the community, but I think there's more opportunity for us to learn and understand more about their responsibilities. You know, I talk to them like at the, the township holiday dinner and stuff like that and I always learn something new about some of the things and aspects of the job that I didn't even know they were responsible for sometimes. So I think it's that kind of thing that we, that I would think of for that type of committee myself.
For what it's worth, anecdotally, every officer that's come and dropped off my book every month has been more than willing to talk. Uh, I feel like they'd be, again, anecdotally, um, I can't see them having an issue with a quarterly, whatever it is, whatever cadence there is, just have a place to, to order pizza and talk.
Yeah. The term that's coming to me right now is forum, like a community forum, uh, focused on public safety, not, not oversight.
So they're not, but each one of those committees too is also moving policy or moving forward recommendations or, or feeling they would necessarily do that.
I was just gonna say, I actually would have been opposed if that, uh, if there were a question that would benefit from the insight of a group of mixed individuals in a forum like that, providing commentary on an issue, I, I would just be off the top of my head, not thinking of what that could be. But if that existed and we said, well, hey, fortunately we have a forum for this, why don't we throw this question or query out to that group of individuals and come back with recommendations, just like sometimes comes up with Parks and Rec, for example, right? Um, and I know they're very different jobs here, but I foresee that or independently, without us knowing or posing a question, an issue could come up and arise in conversation and said, you know what? That's a great idea from wherever it comes from, from the police or the community member. Why don't we at this meeting put forward a recommendation, officials to, you know, have, uh, battery powered everything across the police department. Whatever it could be, uh, I, I don't see that as problematic outcome. I think that's actually beneficial outcome, whether the policy proposal that could arise out of that and whether we request it or not. I can't predict that, you know, but, uh, to have that availability of forum and, and interaction and, uh, multiple expertise and converse about topics, uh, related to public safety, which I think is one of the biggest things and biggest services that we as a township does actually provide, I think that's positive.
I think, yeah.
I agree with how you worded that, in fact, that it would be coming out of a public forum that uh, had representative of police of the community of the township altogether.
It doesn't mean we take the recommendation as viable. It's just as, uh, it's a recommendation that, that any, you know, commissioners, we or any other future commissioners um, should take into consideration if it arises to that occasion and to have that readily available, I think is important. And again, not to, um, diminish all the vast things that people have, that the police have to handle from mental health issues all the way down to traffic issues. That's, let's say even the Trinmore issue, right? Like some of those answers to those questions could be resolved by just acknowledging the challenges of enforcement and understanding what that is as opposed to us rehashing that as a column of, of information at our monthly, for example. Um, and that could be reported, well, reported out accordingly where people can understand it and at least always have that opportunity to intersect.
Yeah, I think, cause I mean, as a member of the EAC, I mean, we have no power over policy or anything. We can make recommendations to you all all day long, but in the end, none of our committees have any power to do it. It's just we're making a suggestion or recommendation for something. And it comes from that, okay, we've got knowledgeable people, we've done some due diligence. It's the same thing in that area where, hey, maybe we can come up with ideas to help the, the officers or to help that education of understanding what do they actually do or what they can, they can not do in some of these circumstances for enforcement.
Uniquely structured from those committees and having, um, I think part of the query here is what, who would be in here and I, I, I think I actually would like to see you know, officers who are on patrol as a part of that committee to get their perspective on some of these potential things that, again, I can't think of what it could be, potential of policy change or, uh, addressing some potential issue and, and having their perspective, you know, also included into any future recommendation, I think is important and salient and valuable in a public forum. As opposed to, you know, might be shop talk privately, you know, in behind those doors, we don't really get to even, we don't even know, you know, until we get the report from troops and so.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, that's, well, I'd like to be able to have that, have that forum, have that conversation, have that understanding of, of those things. And I think the community would as well. And also explain some of the things like how many times have you had to explain how the township works versus the school board, you know, that separation of things or, you know, this is what the ordinance means versus this is, so this is what traffic enforcement really means, or this is what a traffic study is, or this is how we go about handling health crises or whatever, kind of opening that up to the community.
Respond to those, because we see a lot of the same, especially with traffic.
Yeah.
Same issues come up with a different set of people in a different block.
Right.
Or it can also be happy for education, like, uh, last month we had the conitaries come and do this presentation. Well, hey, yeah, let's be sure that we get this done properly in front of the police, have a forum so that you can have a Q and A with the office, you do those, um, uh, hope card exchanges, et cetera, so that those who are interested, that forum's already readily available and that we're sponsoring it and ensuring that people are given information that they need. I mean, I think there's many ways in that step is to agree what challenges, uh, you know, from directly from the, from the department, what challenges that we may not be considering in developing these ideas. I think Mike's question is, do we wish to move forward in that?
Well, we do, um, uh, nationally laid out, how much does that cost that, that advance since, like, overtime and, uh? I'm just, just the one thing I would be sensitive to would be the, the competition piece because most of these guys are pretty far away. Um, and presumably these meetings be at night. Yeah, picking out.
Yeah.
What that does.
I mean, I would envision it's not a lot of people. I mean, I would envision it's not a lot of people, you know, it could even be a rotating business, but two, three max for a couple hours.
Oh, I I mean, I think you definitely want to have your command staff.
Yeah.
And probably a supervisor. Uh, you know, whether it be the the sergeant or corporal that's on duty. And perhaps one officer if you think you need it, but I think you need.
Yeah, no more than that.
Need to define what the. What the roles and responsibilities and purpose of the of the committee is and how it differs from what stems is, right? Cause you've already got the STEM board. That encompasses representatives from the fire departments, the police, the ambulance. You know, and and what the, how they're going to be separate, uh, because the. Candidly, I'm sure the STEM board is going to say, well, what is that what we do, you know?
What's the STEM?
It, thank you.
Emergency management services board.
The when do they meet and?
That's quarterly. So I said, I said on those meetings, but it's usually it's usually focused on emergency management. Training, preparing, looking at plans, making sure.
Plans of land development subdivision.
You know, the fire trucks can get in there. So there's usually a representative from each fire department, there's a representative from the ambulance company. Uh, chief Pico.
Are they public? Yeah.
Yeah, why not build out that existing committee and. Incorporate these mechanisms in that. Pretty people out of the people who are going to be there.
Now, an objection looking into that, if you wanted to do that, given that it's a standing meeting.
That's already requiring those same folks to take time.
I could say, I mean, I see the importance of trying to flesh something out for a little greater communication and and understanding. Uh, and I think whatever we do would be done collaboratively with the police to make sure that it's most efficient use of everybody's time. Uh, so if it is by, you know, kind of tacking on to the stems meeting and and. Making good use of that or something else, but I think having the conversation with a couple of people over there. Uh, because from the times that I've spoken to officers, yeah, I think everybody would like a little bit more dialogue between. Us and police and I think it would be of great benefit. So whatever, how we build out this line. And I think there's a way to do something that's that's positive and good for everybody.
It was, I think the the stems and Jim pitched to me to me before is because you've been serving it for a long time that. Really ends up talking about a lot of the operational needs of the companies and the and department, and I think. That still lends itself to to an air of, uh. Uh, of space, uh, uh, to for for those who just want to come in and and mention something that you want to come in and say, hey, I have these. Traffic issues today. I'm just leaning onto that because that's something that comes up often, um, traffic issues today, but. We're trying to figure out the best practices in in fire safety, you know, for the next quarter. It feels like a like a different conversation.
Yeah. I mean, the fire companies and the ambulance company are going to stick around and talk about, you know, community interaction with traffic and whatever else.
So maybe it's an extension of the time. I I think you would want to put it in the middle, sensitive to the cost, of course, and if you want to put it in the middle of the shift where people. Be there, whether.
Yeah.
And maybe it is earlier than a typical meeting because of whatever needs are, but I think we'd have to ask the question, but again. Trying to narrow it down here. The query is, are we amenable to the concept again? And if so. And the next step is to ensure that we accommodate whatever concerns. Um, or ideas, you know, maybe there's other ideas I'm thinking of that could improve this concept from the parking. While we can get to the next step.
Yeah, because we were just sort of spitballing the structure, but I would like to hear.
It itself, I have a point, much better.
Maybe it's a Zoom call. Maybe it's like a.
Could be.
A a Zoom call every, whatever case it's again. Uh, that. That would help, uh, impression the cost of overtime and travel and all that.
Minimally, I mean, if they're still on the clock, of course. Well, here's what I would suggest. I mean, look, join it. If anyone has like feedback and ideas for it. Let's, you know, have Mike reach out to Chief Pico and get some feedback from them.
Why am I, I mean, like, what do other townships have something like this or, you know?
There, there, there's not a whole lot of, um, consistency on what our townships have. There are things like it. Um, Cheltenham was, Cheltenham has one that their chief. Participates in and there's a lot of community members and clergy that's been established a long time, but it's not a, not a township. Entity, so to speak. Uh, there are's are others that are a little bit. But there's sort of few and far between and they look different. So long way of saying, there's not like a great like template that I've seen say, hey, this is exactly what.
I mean, to Ed's point about other formats, whether it's Zoom, bare minimum, I think, start with educational piece, like here are the issues of the day. In policing that we are. Police in Springfield Township, whether it's burglaries off of church, whether it's hit the, um. You know, I've seen some pretty serious, um, matters of getting ghost guns off the street on Sutton Avenue sort of thing, right? Like, wow, we've seen a real uptick in. And that type of activity beyond the lookout for X, Y, and Z, even if it's a starter. Uh, if the on-ramp is just that type of information, that's also really, I think, valuable to have for people that have access. But they can go on a quarterly basis and say, wow, now I know what's going on in the. Pacing with all the challenges that that our township is facing in public safety. That is a little bit distinct from what are the operational challenges by the post company.
Sound good? Okay.
Picking up Northern Market, Andy.
Yes, still on that be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we only go to Ken.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, we can, Andy can give you an update on that.
Yeah.
Later on. Um, next thing is litigation as well.
Yeah.
Good.
Then personnel manual updates, um, a few months ago, I had presented to you a request from one of our, um. Nonrepresented employees in a meeting, they're not a member of either the police bargaining unit or the public works bargaining unit. Um, to improve our vacation and holiday schedule, um, gave you some information on that. And, um, I just want to know, like, you want me to go down the path of. Looking into a healthcare change, um, in order, are you open to like improving that? Is that something that you want to do? I don't want to be. Um, looked at as, you know, the roadblock to it, um, but, you know, right now, all of the members of. The township staff have the exact same vacation schedule with the exception of public works employees who have been here. Prior to two thousand and twenty four. Um, they have an enhanced vacation schedule and for many years have had the ability to achieve up to five weeks of vacation. Um, in order for them to get the improved vacation schedule where it just accrues quicker, they had to give back. For new employees, um, basically the same vacation schedule that everybody else gets, uh, where we max out at four weeks. Um, you know, in comparison with other communities, um. We could be a little bit better, um, particularly early on in in, um, your employment with the township. Uh, and and I'm not opposed to any of this. I just, I don't want to be looked upon as like giving away the farm, um, because, you know, I obviously covered by that. So my proposal is, um, because as Jim Gary mentioned when he was here, when first talked about this, if you do that for the salary employees. Police are certainly going to ask for it the next time you come up to, uh, you know, their contract. Uh, and there's thirty of those people, uh, and they all make a heck of a lot more than most of the people that are in salary. Group and, um, there's, you know, probably half as many. So, um. My thought is if you if you do want to go down that or or consider it, um, you need to get something back to try and cover those additional costs. And that would be a change to our employer provided healthcare pro program. And I talked about a deductible plan, which a lot of municipalities are moving towards. Um, and that would be coupled with either a health reimbursement plan or a health savings account. Uh, which, so there's a little bit of something in there for the employee if there's a health savings account as well, uh, because that could be utilized after your leave. Uh, so. Just looking for thoughts. You don't have to give them to me now. You can give them to me later on, uh, but.
So, uh, cheat, changing how you offer the the health plan to help. To phrase some of that cost. Uh, have you talked to staff?
Not yet, because I didn't know where the board wants wanted to be on that. I think for some of them, you know, that that take the healthcare incentive, it's not going to be an impact on them, right? Like they're. Not going to be impacted one way or the other. So they'll be like, yeah, go for it. I don't care. Um, others who, you know, are very, uh, comfortable with our existing. HMO plan may be a little bit more resistant.
Okay.
All all I'm saying, I've said this before, and I think private businesses. Do this a lot and probably some of them need to do a better job of it, but. We're, you know, providing their employees of of how rich their benefits are. And as a private company, public side, it puts us that in terms of how rich the benefits are. By then, so, um, and I know we, and I say we as societies like a group, don't always do a great job of. Uh, promoting the, you know, those other parts of of a compensation. Uh, but I do think to, it is very, um, it's an attractive compensation. That does not exist in in the private sector. Uh, that would have worked for. Big companies, maybe is rich in this.
No doubt, um.
Is it worth floating to some of the people that would be affected by that or would? How they would, would they make that trade off?
Yeah, I mean, what I would do is if you're open to it, I would, um, request that Delaware Valley Gulf Trust to come out and make a presentation to. Uh, salaried employees, of which again, there's probably a handful of us.
Yeah.
Um, and see what their reaction is.
Okay. I'm good with that approach.
Sorry, I just missed the last one. What, what, does this in the private sector that's?
John just made the point that the the benefits, fringe benefits that are provided to public service employees are generally. Uh, more generous than those in the private sector. And that we should do a better job of making sure people are aware of it. You know, and and particularly those who have never worked anywhere else, right? They come from. Across the street, we usually say, and then they move right over here, whether it's in public works or police, you know, that was the keys back in the day. They don't know. You know, anything else.
Alright, I'm good with that approach. Okay. Um, Sophia, you're the only one here. Some day, some meeting, this room is full, sometimes medium and sometimes it's June. So you may gather from my email, Sophia is going to intern with us collectively for the summer. Um, how that exactly looks remains to be seen, but we're going to, uh, circle back and see what she's interested in, give her a flavor of everything. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Welcome. And then the last item, um, which again is personnel, it's nothing, um. Confidential, uh, Ray Dawes was promoted to the municipal highway inspector position. So congratulations to Ray. He's a thirty year employee and.
Great.
Good guy.
Also an Orland firefighter?
So thirty eight years and still getting promotions. So it's, it's nicely done.
There we go. Alright, thanks, Mike. Any questions on the bill listing, Tab C?
Um, I did.
Go for it.
So, uh, page two of thirteen, under the, uh, Aqua Bill. I was wondering why we're still getting such a high bill for twelve hundred east Willow Grove Avenue.
That's a maintenance, looks like, maintenance and repair item.
That was a repair bill?
Yeah.
Uh. No, that's an Aqua Bill.
But some of them are.
That that four fifty one is the, um, Parks and Rec code.
Okay.
For, um, the rec center as opposed to, um, general utility expenses.
Okay, gotcha.
I don't know how to find out what went on there.
I will look into that, but I believe there was one month that we did not receive an invoice from them. So it could be.
Might be two months, yeah.
Yeah, that would that would make sense.
Aqua never forgets my invoice.
We're on like a master for some of them.
Okay. Um, I was curious as to on page three of thirteen. Uh, item, uh, come with the Pennsylvania clean circuit subscription. What the hell is that?
Uh, that's for the police side. That's so that they can run, um, the, uh. Booking system and they go directly into the state police with that.
And that's an annual fee or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, okay. And the other general comment I had is I I have never seen so many. Requests for reimbursement of cell expenses for it to individuals.
That's the.
Ninety bucks, ninety bucks. We've never seen it.
Sure you have.
We have.
Every year.
Once a year?
Once a year.
Once a year, okay.
Once a year, so divide that ninety by twelve. That's what they get. We used to issue them pagers. Um, and then everybody started carrying a cell phone and instead of paying for the pagers, we just gave them this, like, it's worth it.
Okay, okay, thank you. What's your page?
Yes.
Alright, Tab D is the zoning board. Schedule. Any questions on that?
You notice there's two, two nights they'll be meeting, one is continuing the water market petition and then there's two new ones.
Why is the Northern Market have two different case numbers?
Uh, they they filed, they filed two applications.
Yeah.
They've been consolidated, so.
Okay.
Um, it's really.
There's no sense that they're going to fold or decide that they're going to just keep pushing.
Yeah, no, I haven't, I haven't gotten that sense from them.
And is that still happening across the county with that, my rec election?
What, this is the, uh, the issue with skill games?
Right, my rec election is like there's other individuals that interest being sure that these cases are moving forward exactly.
That may be, I don't know. I only got through half of my cross examination of, um, of Mr. Patel, so I I don't know. Maybe we'll find out on on, uh.
Oh, we have to come there.
On the twenty third.
I think this is, to your point, I think there's a few other municipalities that are, um, dealing with skill games right now. And trying to figure out how to deal with them, but we had an ordinance in place, fortunately, and we're, yeah.
Yeah, lots of dark money from the skill game lobby.
See, they're paying for the whole defense.
Well, I think that was my question, is that this is just happening.
Alright, so John will make an announcement there. Do you, uh, have any issues with the, um, um, basically an Airbnb being run out of the resident, a residential? So there's.
So it's funny, I know Airbnb stands for bread and breakfast in there, but seeing it written as a bed and breakfast. We're not really serving any breakfast.
No, just a short term.
Yeah. Um. I don't have any strong, I would just let them do their thing. No, the perfect answer there. Yeah.
I mean, if you read the petition, um, you folks didn't get a copy of the petition, but apparently the people who own the house immediately next door purchased it. And they've been renovating it over time and making it available on VRBO or Airbnb. Um, provides a little bit of rental income for them to be able to fix, continue to fix it up, and it also doesn't obligate it. Exclusively to a tenant where they couldn't come in and do, you know, work, you know, when they need to, like they can list it, delist it. Um, as they're doing work. So, um, the the property was in pretty good disrepair before they bought it. Um, like. The the previous owner was part of the five percent that you hear from ninety five percent of the time.
Yeah.
So, um.
I wonder what market there is. I mean, it's not really a destination, you know, usually the. You get a higher percentage in places where there's people traveling.
I was at the Chesapeake Hill Grill for lunch the other day. I saw a whole bunch of people coming for a wedding, so. So saying with the World Cup coming in and, I mean, there's stuff, there's some high profile events coming up over the next couple of years.
Particular location, I would say it's a tough call because I wish there was just more clarity you could give. Um, I think go any which way, it's not like it's happening in that volume and there is benefit as. There really aren't, the nearest hotels really are like for the meeting, um, Willow Grove, except but for. Hotel, and so I think I definitely, you know, heard through the grapevine, lots of people. Just having family in town or seeing a student at a college is just.
Yeah.
There's, there is a market, whether we participate or not. I think I'm trying to leave zoning that sort of.
And is the business merchant tax like both for that? So are we doing screens of of. Listings on Airbnb or VRBO?
Mark has identified several and brought them to Craig's attention.
Like on a monthly basis, they'll they'll run screens.
It's not really on Airbnb, but well, our first guy was. Sanji, uh, he has a couple of them that Mark found online.
Is that applied to long term rounds?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Yep, yeah. Uh, yeah, absolutely, yep, yeah. In fact, like if you like rented a, an office out of your home, you know, to yourself, like for tax purposes, it's subject to it.
Say what?
Say what?
I try, but I never qualify for the deduction.
Alright, so we'll let the zoning hearing board figure that out.
Okay. Uh, E is executive. E is executive. Did you do that on purpose?
I did not.
What does F stand for? Uh finalized, because we already talked about it. Uh, G rec center, master plan, okay. We talked about this last month a little bit, right? We already talked about the cost and all that stuff?
A little bit. I mean, it was a long presentation, and you had the Trimmer Avenue folks here, so we were kind of moving things along, trying, I don't know how much, you know, really. We've had a couple of conversations.
Okay. So, you know, obviously we have a a high price tag, right? Costs have just gone up, so it becomes a much more expensive project. So we're at a point where we have to decide, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna do the project or try to scale back the project, or not do the project at all, and get out of the rec center business and not have that as an amenity and an asset? Um, the one thing I asked Mike to look into was, what if we put it to a referendum? And and for something that's gonna be that much of an expense, um at a taxpayer expense, put it out to a vote to the greater community. A project of that size, I think, could call for that. You figured out that legally we don't have to, just based on how much we would borrow, but it doesn't stop us from doing it, right?
Right.
To go that path, so.
Uh, that's just. I just, I just don't think you could do a referendum on a purely advisory question, like, should we build a community center? You know, it's really gotta be.
Well, specific, should we spend?
Should we borrow?
Should we borrow?
Ten million dollars to build a recreation center.
Shall we start ten million dollars for the purpose of constructing a recreation center?
Yeah, one basketball.
And Mike, as far as the the uh Nelson, Rep Nelson uh piece, is that a this if approved, part of the next capital budget, the ten thousand dollars appropriation?
Ten million, be ten million, that's a type of.
So we already have the five.
I thought you'd spend ten million and get ten thousand, I thought.
So we already have that five million to spend.
Yeah, so we really only need another five from.
So we're trying to increase that to ten, but we would still have to match fifty fifty one, so. Still a a expensive project.
Big lift. In my opinion, it's a real big lift for what you're getting for the utility, the additional utility you're getting out of a new building there. I mean, it would be lovely and shiny and bright new and stuff, but I mean, forty million bucks for a another, you know, for one very nice basketball court and a couple of meeting rooms. It seems like a kind of a huge waste of money.
So what would you do?
Probably?
What would you do?
I, what I would do is I would go back to the original plan, tear down the rectory, you know, re repay, restrike, get more parking up there, and and maintain what we have.
At five million dollars?
No, I wouldn't, uh you don't need to spend five million bucks to do that.
People do it on a weekend.
Have that five bucks, yeah.
We're taking the numbers at face value, right, the digital against stunt was their proposal is a five million dollar rent.
Right now.
And versus a twenty million dollars.
I would not renovate, I mean, beyond what I described, you know, take down the rectory, redo the parking lot, improve the parking, and then just work with what we have.
Those are the costs and you end up with the spaces that aren't even.
Like, all your mechanicals need to be upgraded, like we're, we're fighting with that air conditioning system.
How much is that property worth on the open market? If we were to sell it?
Got to have it a priest. True, got a feel for that, you're a realtor.
I mean, uh, I'm I'm spitballing, I'm throwing ideas out, but what if we sold that property and bought a larger property where a rec center would fit?
If we're buying a larger property, isn't it gonna be more than what?
Not necessarily. Depends on what the person buying wants to do.
You're getting the land for nothing. We already paid.
I'm talking about buying the the options that the firehouse has on the lands that on the, on the property that it has behind the firehouse, where they're just parking RVs. Where you have a back going into Mermaid, back going into the soccer fields and the ballparks, you have a parking problem over there already, now you have an extra parking lot where people can park in overflow, and now you're not like, you're in the town center, and and it's a use, that's not a uh uh commercial, uh commercial slash residential that the neighbors don't want.
We still have to pay to build it, so we're still, we're still talking about.
So you sell, you 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 sell the land, you uh buy that other, and you, it, look, I I didn't do any of the math, but it'd have to make sense, right? But I just feel like that site right now, we're already too small, you're gonna spend twenty million bucks, and it's, it's already too small.
But what you're saying is we might spend more, because it's too small.
Yeah, but if.
We get something bigger and build something bigger.
You build something bigger that's more useful.
Yeah, you might get more utility out of something. It's 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 a terribly small site.
I think one, one thing seems there is the price is too high for the utility that we've seen so far, and that's
Yeah, it's a given.
That we all agree.
Yeah.
I don't, I I would, I think it's challenge, or uh I would be reticent to give up the opportunity we have now of having open access from Willow Grove to um Mermaid throughway for recreation, right? I wonder if there's something in between that's more palatable economically and more economic for having a covered basketball court, and how do we get to that? What's the process for that utility at a better value?
But like, to your point, like covered basketball court, whole barn type structure, whatever the structure is, I mean, that's only good six months a year, thirty reasonable.
I guess I'm not saying it needs to be that level of simple.
Yeah, you can, you can.
Yeah, you'd make them.
I'm not saying it needs to be a simple, it doesn't have to be like, you know, uh Peterson built it, I, I, you know, just something less uh costly, whatever it is, whatever it is.
More utilitarian as opposed to.
A little flashy and chill. Flashy and stylish.
Like there's like, the far post out in Limerick is basically just a lot of siding, but that's heated, warm, and I'm sure it'd be considerably, it's, you know, at least twice the size of the proposed building that we have here, and it probably costs the same, because it's just.
Panel with my dad, right? There's like seven of my dads.
The little, the little league, you know, came here and said, we built this, um the interior site for, let's call it a hundred fifty K or whatever, and I'm like, oh, obviously, what different worlds, different demands, different requirements for our bids, et cetera. I just don't know the process for us to get to a better, um just from your perspective, a a more cost effective and economical outcome that's less grand years, but more utilitarian.
I mean, I I think you you can contact, I mean, you're you're already working with Boyle Construction, they give you the numbers on the building that MKSD had kind of designed. You could talk to them, you could talk to the guys that are helping out, bounce H O's with their fieldhouse. I I don't think that that's gonna be anywhere near twenty million dollars.
Oh, due respect to Boyle Construction, they didn't have anything priced. They they just looked, they gave it the whole hairy eyeball, because they didn't, they didn't have any design plans, they didn't have a cap, they they.
Cost per square foot based upon what, you know, in PKSD.
They they put out a number where they wouldn't get her. And and that's what they should, it wasn't value engineered, it wasn't, it was just a, I'll do it for this number, I'll do it all day long.
Well, we can, I mean, there's.
Oh, yeah, I did.
There's pole barn manufacturers that specialize in athletic facilities, and you know, we can reach out to them, like how much for a building, you know, of X amount by X amount, three meeting rooms or breakout rooms for little recreation space and programs? Yeah, I mean, there's ways to get numbers, like I could do that, I just didn't.
Yeah, alright, so you you build a pole barn, it's just as big, but it's just an open space, maybe a couple little breakouts. No second floor, no elevator, it's cheaper, uh let's say it's half.
It's gotta be less than half, in order to make it worthwhile to pursue that.
Alright, so let's say it's eight.
Okay, I'll give you the number.
You'll carry eyeball.
I mean, are we, are you happy with that space for the next twenty five years? A little bit less than half what we've done? Yeah, the answer might be yes, I don't know. Not a, to me, it's not a slap dunk.
Are are we doing something just to do something, or are we doing something because we gotta do address what have, what's there?
Well, you you cannot have a rec center, I mean, we could just sell the property and not buy a new one, and and actually save taxpayer money. We just don't have that.
Work with what you have.
We just don't have that as an amenity.
I think the concern with working with what we have, Pete, is two buildings, which don't allow you to maximize the site, right, for parking purposes.
Right.
They're both in awkward locations, neither one is is doing what you really want it to do, right, because it's got narrow, you know, fall zones on either side.
Basketball courts, not even regulation, youth kicking courts.
Yeah, yeah, like money bits, but disrepair. You have a oil burning, oil burner in the old church, that's on its last legs, needs to be replaced.
But that's not the, that's not the national war debt.
I understand.
That's ten, twenty thousand bucks, new boiler system.
Oh, that's.
Down, that's for your house.
It just seems like it's a bit of.
Twenty billion.
It's like we're talking about one of those expenses, but it's, it feels like the.
You need a roof on the gym, for sure.
Feel like after ten years, we'll be at twenty million, just the repairs.
The best case scenario is you have still this dumpy little court that people play there as a last resort, just because they can't get anywhere else.
I think there's utility of maintaining the site as as a, as municipal site, and then having throughway from Mermaid to Willow Grove, and I think that benefits the community as a right, in general, to to the point of whether or not it's willing, you're willing to offload the site. I'm not, but I mean, I'm not, it's not an unreasonable proposition.
So you mentioned the site in Limerick? Yeah, what if we were to try and find out if if like, you know, a place like a pole barn type building exists, and what they look like and feel like, would that alleviate some of your concerns, and and what I think, John, maybe your concerns are that we're thinking too small, and that we should think bigger, uh like, but if they're like perfectly functional and like handsomely done and dressed up, like, you know, is that something that is worth pursuing?
I mean, maybe, what is it for? Like, what what is our end use for this building? If it's a pole barn, is it just to give people sports teams space to play?
I think it's indoor gymnasium space for basketball or volleyball, pickleball, pardon? That's the, you know, the breakout rooms, um yoga and those things, summer camp program.
The the most recent design, how many basketball courts were there in there?
Well, it was one full, but then you could.
And if it, if the, the biggest cost piece that we talked about at the committee was oftentimes the walking path, right, and I was thinking, you know, we don't necessarily need an indoor walking path, well, we could improve by having a better walking path outside. And we're trying to do that across all the parks, and we're investing in walking paths in general, and if we're, if we're losing that, that's not also the end times of of loss to a recreation site that has other utility, other utility, and theoretically, it's now, you know, part of the walkable system of the the village of Windmill. That's, that's about what we're walking already.
Well, you could put a new walking path all around the soccer fields too.
Right, and so, so, you know, if we're losing just the indoor walking path, and there's other ways to get more, I mean, more utilitarian, more cost effective space, that seems achievable. Uh, and sounds like it's possible, possibility to go back to the more simple in between of requiring this, you know, these other more dressed up pole barn, I don't know what other mechanisms or methods are, but whatever they are, it's not good to be called, but. You know, this, this number seems too high, however, I think my understanding, and so we, we had to go through the exercise regardless to ask the utility of this site, one way or the other, so now we've done our due diligence to determine the low number, the good money after bad potential money pit issue versus what could you possibly get? Now, I think what we're asking for is what can you get between, because I don't see that we want to lose a recreation site.
I know the easiest way to save a lot of money on the current design is to get rid of that second floor, get rid of the walking path. But I would advocate keeping it. To me, you're gonna look back ten years from now, the amount of people, especially our elderly residents, who will go there all during the winter months, even the hot months, and they're not gonna be a walking outside on track. That's a huge amenity.
Can we do it with? Maybe it's a, you know, a larger footprint, take out the meeting rooms, and it's all on one floor and a walking path.
Well, they did that at that one, the committee visit, I didn't go to that, but they said it was a nightmare. It was like it's a, it's a safety issue, people playing sports. Yeah, but like the one that we went to, I guess Montgomery had the. Do you remember the feel of that? It was just like a vibrant feel.
And why Amber has that feel, it's always bad.
What was the square footage on the Montgomery one? I mean, not Montgomery, Montgomery, Nashville.
I think it was, it was bigger, because they had two full sized basketballs, yeah, and the sort of track went around two full sized basketballs. So when they had the cyclists going, they had like, it was like pickleball heaven, here at like ten in the morning or something.
I, I mean, I agree that I deal, I deal well, having an indoor walking track, I think is great, but just looking for an avenue that finds us, you know, more cost.
So if you build a pole barn, it's usable, it's also gonna sit empty a lot. The thing that we're designing would never be empty. So, yeah, we're not here to make money, we're here to, we're providing an amenity, and the more they use it, the more it's worth it. So we save money, but it's not gonna be as usable. And that might be okay, I don't know, like I, I don't wanna tell raise people taxes significantly, and that's why I kind of went down this path of a referendum, because people could overwhelm me and say, no, I don't wanna spend an extra hundred dollars.
So what's the number, what's our, what's the number that's piled up? And how do we get there?
Well, one, if we get this ten million, I mean, that's like.
Wouldn't we find out?
Covering half the cost of that, not until the budget's passed.
So guess it's that way.
But is it a coin flip? Is it a good chance? It's not a, it's not a, um, it's in the bill, it's in Harris. So the 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 bill passes.
It's included.
Well, they would pass a bill, which I think have a gross amount of money, which then that they would allocate.
They would allocate.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no guarantee, the bill passes, that we we're gonna get five million or whatever.
Correct.
But we're thinking about spending ten.
Well, potentially, we're thinking about thirty five, but the plot is matched.
So I thought it was gonna be.
You already have five of this ten.
I thought it would be like a twelve million dollar project, and that you would be taking out seven million and leveraging it with five.
Right.
Um, and at that number, you know, you're looking at anywhere from fifty six dollars a household increase per year to seventy two dollars, depending upon whether you take a twenty or thirty year. Uh, where it gets dicey is when you get to a fourteen million dollar, and that doubles, right, because you have five million at Raffey, fourteen million gets you to nineteen million, we're rounding up to twenty million when we're talking here, but that's kind of where you are, that 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 goes up to like a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen dollars a household to a hundred and forty four dollars a household.
Yeah, plus the operating costs.
Well, the operating cost is an additional amount on top of that, be another thirty dollars.
I feel like a big piece of this is knowing.
We get one.
The additional five million. Well, I know, but like, it it will go from, that's a completely no for me without the additional five, to, okay, maybe if we get the additional five, maybe it's not a nineteen million dollar project, maybe we get to sixteen million, like million dollar project. And now we're like, now we're, now we're cooking.
Oh, except that if you take the ten million.
I was gonna match, you gotta match the whole. But it's, but it's took the A name, right?
Yeah.
Or nine nine.
Right.
Yeah, oh, yes.
When do we risk losing the five?
I think it's twenty twenty six, twenty twenty, no, twenty thirty, it's ten year appropriation.
That's true, that's guaranteed.
Twenty twenty six is the terminal avenue.
This is why we get paid the big bucks.
I mean.
So what are our decision points and when do they have to be made?
Well, I mean, MKSD would love for you to make a decision to go forward, keep going tomorrow, but I don't know that you do spend any additional money on.
Yeah.
Architectural or engineering until you're committed to spending this kind of money.
Don't you have to get a decision on the ten million RAPD?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big RAPD.
Well, we already have five of them. We're just trying to, we're trying to get.
Get another five. I asked for ten just because they usually put it down.
Yeah.
You asked for a ten additional?
I mean, that's. That's a big, that's a big decision point, I think. I don't know when that's gonna happen, but, yeah.
Well, that was a new wrinkle that we tried to go get.
Yeah, that just happened last month.
We already had, we already had the five year mark.
So, uh, if, in the budget, and when do they go, when they move that?
Paul. They're, they're not on a calendar year like us, they're on fiscal year.
So it's a couple of months.
Yeah.
I mean, look, the longer we go, the keep repairs.
We have to keep.
Putting lipstick on the pig.
State budget July, state budget July, I think July.
So the decision points are. You can kick the can a little bit to find out about five million, but regardless, just assume that we don't get it. Right. We have five million for the project. We can look at cheaper pole barn option, has some of the same sports capability, but doesn't have the other stuff. We can decide.
Renovate.
Not to do a project at all.
You can renovate one. You know, you could take one of the two buildings and renovate, put on an addition or something. I'm not advocating for that, because that's always as higher.
I mean, is the track not possible in a pole barn? I mean, why couldn't you just set it out there, track and set?
I think once you get into a second floor. It just becomes a second floor, so it's just a.
Exit cost.
I don't know enough about how they're engineered, how they, they usually like, they're just like columns.
Yeah.
And then the trust system.
I guess you can.
Pretty, uh.
Hanging kinda.
A walking track would be a lot of engineering, a lot of structure, because you get a live load. You know, you don't want the live load collapsing.
Or we can maximize it and put it to a referendum. Give the public an opportunity to vote. If, if it's that big of a, big of expense, we have people all the time, how can we just put it out to a vote? Like, you obviously can't do that with most things, but this is a major expenditure.
Change.
That's what Abington just did, they're spending what, two hundred and thirty million on one school?
Yeah, and they had.
But they had to.
They had to, because of the amount.
Yeah, because they were exceeded there.
But just because we don't have to doesn't mean we can't.
Right, you can, you can do it. You, you can, you can go out for non-electoral or electoral debt, it's up to you. So electoral debt, obviously you put out the referendum question, non-electoral, you can just do it as long as you're within your borrowing capacity. So Abington went out for electoral debt because they had already exceeded their borrowing capacity, but they had no choice, but you do have a choice.
Yeah.
So about the referendum option, would you wait until November anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do it, you could do it, um, in the primary too, or you could do it in the primary too, it doesn't have to be in general.
We just had, yeah.
Yeah, so you'd just have to wait till this, next May.
If you wanted to do the primary.
Right, or if you wanna do the primary.
Just do it in the fall. In the fall.
Yeah.
Is there deadline?
Yeah, ninety days before you have to have your question in, I think.
Is it primary?
February, September, August. We have that in by August.
By August. But by then, if the state budget was going on July, we have more information.
Yeah, you may know, may know the status of the RAPD grant, but.
But we may still, anyway, I mean, even if we get, even if we have ten million, we're still gonna spend another ten million if we're gonna do the fall. For as it stands, so we may still want to go.
Says governing body must adopt a resolution signifying its intent to increase the debt and may also serve. They also certify a copy of the resolution and the form of the question to the county board of electors at least forty-five days before the election. Question may be placed on the ballot at any municipal, general, primary or special election poll for other purposes.
I mean, does it have to be November? Is there, is there a reason why November? Just, just.
Because it's the next election turnout before the vote.
Yeah. Before the township.
The seven people that are against it would show up on a, on a non-election cycle.
Yeah. Fair.
If it's more than ninety days, you have to have. You have to do front all the posts on your route, you know, have it. But it just makes more sense to have it, but. Watch your schedule of elections. If you're a resident.
Yeah.
And plus it's just good for public feedback, I mean. People may give you an idea, but they may not have all the details, but it's all laid out in, what cares what the amenity is for our community, for the next generation. But there's gonna be a, you know, financial ratification for everybody.
What was voter turnout in the primary?
Very low.
Yeah, very low. There, there wasn't a lot on the ballot that was contested.
It was high in Abington.
Yeah.
It's high in Abington.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to say, if we're gonna wait till November, are you gonna really get anything more than twenty percent anyway?
And Springfield's typically hard.
Yeah.
And I, I would wonder, I mean, would we advocate, would we have a side, would we have to do a fair amount of marketing, something wanted to be done, or would we just let? Because that, I mean, really opens it up for misinformation.
Yeah, you'd wanna get information, yeah, for sure, whether you're pushing it a yes or no. I'd wanna be completely transparent, like, here are all the pros and the cons, you know, here's the vision with this design.
I think also, but to, to John's point, the often, or frequently in our meetings with the KSD and at the committee meetings, it was stated, we are very far away. From something final, to your point, hairy eyeball, because it's so far away from what's true. Um, the rooms can still be moved, all, all these factors still coming to play, so much so that ultimately, when I saw that number, I thought, okay, this is just. Hairy eyeball being the word, but maximum spend, maximum possibility, most expensive finishes, clear. Um, and that may not be the ultimate outcome, and then you put up a referendum, it's not clear. I think that's also a challenge, right? Why didn't you get them, uh, they could go the other way? Hey, you actually spent sixty million, why didn't you get the better?
Well, what would the referendum look like? I mean.
Does that, does it always have to be a, uh, one or two? Is it always a binary choice? You have multiple choices.
Yes or no.
Always yes or no?
It's always yes or no?
Yeah.
You can have multiple questions, but they'd be framed differently, yes.
Yeah, and you, I don't, I'm not even sure you can link the questions. I don't even think you can do an either or. I mean, the election board is gonna tell you, that's not, that's not a good question.
You can't do an A and B, like, will you say yes to twenty million, or would you say it's a ten for a pole barn?
No, yeah, it's not, you can't do multiple.
It's not a survey?
Not, not a survey.
Not a survey.
Don't think, I don't think they're gonna publish that question.
It's gonna be shout, town, Springfield incurred debt.
Yeah.
Non-electoral debt up to X amount for the purpose of constructing a rec center.
There, there's lots of room for misinformation in the process, it's just what I have seen.
Can we do a, an analogy with the KSDs? Rec center is two twenty million as.
I think I need, me personally, I think I need a little more time to think on it and potentially see what a pole barn structure, but theoretically, if you can eat, or, or something.
The other options.
What are the other options? I guess, to, to what I was saying earlier, I just don't even know the process to understand what that in-between number look like, what are the other options? It seems right now pretty finite, we've spent the money after bad, let's say, on a pig option, or twenty million dollars, I mean, clearly, there's something between, what is the process to get to that between? If you can pursue that and get us that information, it seems like the next step is, is waiting the RAPD potential decision point in the fall regardless. And so we have a little.
Hopefully sooner, correct.
Well, hopefully sooner, but, um, enough time to explore this, these other pathways.
And maybe we as commissioners can put a note when we talk to constituents, ask them what they go about. Because with this committee, it's sort of like the same voices over and over again, and we're, we're talking, we're basically coming up with design, it's not like we're debating what, what an average taxpayer is not intimately involved may feel about this, so.
Maybe our next newsletter should have a big.
That's a good point, I'm gonna put that in mind, ask for feedback.
And I can only say, in the experience of being on the committee, being in the neighborhood where it's gonna be done, it is all across the board. If it's not exactly this, I don't want it, if it's all of this, I would pay it for it ever. I, you know, it, it's all across the board, and I, I think in the end, it will come down to us making a lawful decision.
Yeah, okay.
That's just my experience thus far.
But so, just to address the point of, uh, you sell land, you gotta buy new land, and you gotta, still gotta build it. If you're gonna spend fifteen million to build something. An option A, and option B is you sell the land, buy a new land, and still spend fifteen million, it's, you're still spending the same money, and you might have the same, you might have a better outcome.
And your suggestion is potentially there's a better, a better site.
A, a lot.
For greater, for greater value for your fifteen.
Correct, where, where, where your economies can go farther, because, you know, on a smaller site, you're, you have to spend, um, a certain amount of money, you're not gonna get a. You're gonna spend that same amount of money for those certain things on a larger site, and you just have more banking. This economy is, it's, it's what I'm saying.
So I think everybody was concerned about the parking flow and the current plan, like, because how tight everything is, like.
There's only one in and out.
Yeah, it's gonna be a fiasco.
I thought that Pleasant Ave would be open on the backside at least.
And when there's a soccer. Constituents back there, they don't like that.
The park, that, all that fills up with soccer, I don't know how they thought of that.
We talked about that a lot. Do you remember how we landed on that to avoid people parking there for Laurel Beach, for the soccer games?
I think one piece of the puzzle was improving the parking situation on Laurel Beach side and then creating some connected path to help direct traffic.
Oh, and also we moved a lot of parking from.
Yeah.
The side up to there, so it would actually be a pretty, to make most of the parking really close to Laurel Grove Avenue.
Going back to the design aspect.
Push the building back and like, kinda like, quiet, so it's not convenient, as convenient as it is today.
And, um, another, just going back to the original query about the design, one perspective that was provided that we didn't land there was that you could actually have the ability to take the entire, like, break up parking up front. Building, then soccer field, so it's clear that soccer fields, I think, belong to the, to be the Laurel Beach parking lot. And it would discourage folks from parking there to, well, do around the building or what have you. But the reason that didn't, uh, rise, well, not being that rose, was because of, uh, it just, the decrease in parking, the, the parking reduction required in general to achieve that footprint. Just for.
What were their sixty, fifty, sixes basically?
Um, I think they leaned on eighty, eighty-something basis.
Which is a good amount of space.
But I think in the other potential, a couple of other iterations, they kept kind of finding thousands of fifty, she remembers, which is insufficient. But I mean, one could argue, uh, again, to that point, is it? Another iteration that never really came to the fore was, do you move it closer to the street, put the parking behind? And it's fewer parking, you're encouraging more people to walk there, and that's a more inviting space. Um, those are the type of conversations that MKSD really spent a lot of time on the, with the committee on, even though they kept kind of falling into this shoehorned rectangle L shape. That you see, but I mean, that's a, these are all kind of more policy questions that I think could also speak to, right? Move the building closer to the street, it's more inviting, it invites more walkers. Again, could go many different things for context, or as you think about this.
All right, so next steps from here, um, we'll look into pole barn options, kind of just.
See if they exist, see what they look like.
Other, I think there's something that's not pole barn and not twenty million dollars.
Yeah. Um, but again, I would just repeat, as commissioners, why don't we work on getting constituent feedback? Um, the average person doesn't know much about it, like, hey, if these were the options, or here's the trade-off, you know, where do people would land on this?
And we're gonna put out maybe another email blast just to, to invite more feedback, that would stay.
Well, let's find out where we are with.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we need design feedback as much as really financial feedback, right?
Yeah.
Really the appetite of people taking this on, our appetite and the public's appetite.
Are you saying just, just might be just put out an email blast, that is, that's what they're gonna do?
I don't know that we solicit that without more information.
Yeah.
Because you're just gonna get a fire hose of, don't raise my taxes, or, no.
You'll take it.
Be an educational.
Yeah.
We'll put that out.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. All right, any questions on the recycling report, Tab H? Okay. Um. EAC members, Steve was with us, did we?
Steve's, Steve's up for another term.
He's up.
And I have an email out to, at Patrick to see.
Okay.
When the story is.
All right. All right, Jay Avondale, we talked about. Kay, landscape equipment, we talked about. That's the end of the book, folks.
Yeah, I got a couple of things for you.
A million, uh.
Yeah, so I got three quick things. Uh, in your folders tonight, there is a, uh, set of bylaws that the planning commission reviewed. Uh, they'd like to make changes, they're very, very minor, um, nothing substantial. Uh, if you're okay with them, you should bless them on Wednesday night, they can move forward. Originally, originally, they had, um, put forth a provision where they wanted to have, uh, a property owner eligible to be.
Non-resident.
Commission, not a resident, and the MPC very clearly states you cannot do that.
Yeah.
So they readjusted and went back, and they just made a couple of very minor changes that are highlighted in that.
Okay.
Set of resolutions, so.
You just wanna know if there's any objections after we look at that?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Unless I hear otherwise, I'll just assume you're okay with it.
You can just look through it as a matter of course.
Um, I think, yes.
When did something come?
They also, um, I think that there was at least one member who was interested in seeing if they could, um, ma- make it open to property owners. Because, uh, I think our historical commission is eligible for property owners as well. Uh, in fact, Al Conley is only on there because he's a major property owner.
Right.
Uh, but the municipality's planning code says you cannot be just a property owner, you must be a resident in order to be on your planning commission, so.
Okay.
That's what stimulated that. Um. Nine hundred through one thousand Mermaid Lane, it was a subject of a land development a couple of years ago, and moving forward with the renovations there. Um, they wanna put sanitary sewer service to the rear building.
Sorry to cut you off. So one of the changes would be you'd have to, you, you, it would be an allowance for a landowner of a non-resident?
No, that's not permitted, so.
You have to be a resident.
You have to be a resident.
And from Mr. Conley's statement, from his, he would not be allowed to be on that.
Not.
When it's there, he could be in the.
Yes. Yes, he could be on historical. Um, so nine hundred and one thousand Mermaid Lane, uh, they wanna put sanitary sewer service to a rear building, which currently has none. It's a good thing that they do it, um, but they need to access a manhole located on your park, Mermaid Park. It's right outside of the fence line, um, and Andy.
This is Robinson's.
No, this is the old George Fordham Sons building.
Oh, okay.
At Mermaid Park.
Okay.
Which is the old USDA.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, so it's right outside of the fence line, but he needs to formalize, uh, it's a right of access and license agreement. Uh, that ultimately, Andy, correct me, might get turned into an easement, um, but not until we figure out. How to memorialize the ownership of the park with the county.
Yeah, so the county doesn't recognize the, the township's ownership of the park parcel, there's no assigned parcel number to it, just all appears to be, you know, one big property still, even though the township has.
USDA.
Yeah, we have a deed.
So, we have a, yeah, there's a deed from like the seventies.
With each bounds.
Yeah, but there's probably no subdivision plan, so in, in any event, I think we're gonna be able to work it out with the county, but in the interim. They need access to the property per the approved plan to do the installation, so they agreed to just take a license agreement. And in the license agreement, they agree to execute a formal easement agreement once we are able to get the situation squared away with the county. So it's just an interim step that, you know, gets them their sanitary sewer connection, and then will get us eventually a formal easement in the future. So.
Just curious, do they, does the, does the government, federal government property pay? Sure, the council tax, no.
They don't even have to comply with our building rule, our building.
Sidewalk codes.
Code, sidewalk codes, none of it, no, they don't, that's probably why the parcel's so convoluted.
Yeah, I mean, they.
County didn't know what to do with it when they got it.
Well, the, the, the government probably said we don't need to file a subdivision plan.
Yeah.
We're not, we're exempt or what have you, but they, they gave the township a deed anyway. The deed is reported, which is really interesting, but, um, no separate parcel.
So if you're okay with that, I'd like you to authorize the execution of the, the license that Andy created, um, subject to Andy being comfortable with whatever easement plan they give us, or. I guess I would call it.
Yeah, he's been exhibit plan.
Sounds good. Currently, there's no support for that property.
No.
Any of those properties?
Uh, the front parcel has sewer, but the rear parcel does not. So.
Okay.
So that's all for regular stuff. That I had extra.
That's it?
Nah, yeah, I got another, um. Executive for you, though.
Okay, um. We're officially into our summer attire. For June, so no ties on, uh, Wednesday? Or the equivalent for female.
We have to wear shirts. No shirts, no shoes, no service.
I want you in a tank top.
Good.
Um, I had a question about the, so the, the traffic report, do we get monthly? I just had a queen of clarity on. So the first page where it just gives you a number of, of things that happened that month. Um. Where's the big number? Um. Motor vehicle violations, second, third to the last page.
Is this, is this called a report?
Yeah, motor vehicle violation stats. So year to date, for example, there's three hundred and forty-two speeding violations. Does this number include tickets and warnings?
Could, I gotta, I gotta, I have to ask him.
Okay. It seems like a lot of speeding tickets. Which is amazing, you know, given that you have a, you can't use radar. Um, but I was just curious if, if the violation, if. If a warning is still coded as a violation, even if a ticket was issued. I guess that would go for.
Good chance it could be, I'll let you find out from Mike, how they, how they report it.
I guess that would be the same answer for the whole page. I wrote something else that came in.
I have a question. Any bites on our, uh.
The last.
RFP for the, uh.
You have any idea?
Solar panels?
I have been speaking with people every day since we put it out.
Okay.
I spoke with a guy from Spots Brothers today, um, who did Phoenixville. And they were very interested, and they said, I just wanna confirm that you do not have a responsible contractor ordinance, I said, we do not, and he said, okay.
We're a responsible contractor.
Um, it's one that requires a bidder to have, uh, basically apprentice program.
Oh, okay.
Basically is geared towards unique contractors. But it cuts out all the small guys.
Okay. So you think we'll have a, some kind of reaction to our proposals by?
Yeah, um, so Wilson Engineering sent it out to a laundry list of firms like this long, um, and I've, and. Ron Salantano sent it out to half a dozen. I don't know, ten firms, uh, Joy sent it out to at least a couple of different people as well, and the construction news people, they've picked it up. Because we've been getting inquiries about it.
Okay.
So. I think we'll get a good turnout.
For both options?
Yes, well, I can't guarantee you that we'll, that every potential bidder will price both options.
Okay.
But you may get a fair number of township purchase, make it a fair number, um, that are just the, um, power purchase agreement, and you may get a fair number that bid both. Oh, your neighbor Tony, he called today on another matter, another matter.
Well, he's on the zoning. He's got his own application.
Yeah, 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 but he called on another matter, and I told him about it, and he said, oh, good, 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 so.
Nice.
There's another stuff.
And to reiterate, a point I brought up last, when we were discussing it, but that's, that's a general changing landscape of energy, and how much it is going to. Be crazy the next, you know, ten years plus. Facebook just struck a huge billion dollar deal with a nuclear reactor in Chicago, to basically provide the, the sole energy for, for. Other services, and added a, a small portion of their needs, but you have private companies like Microsoft, Facebook, gobbling up nuclear reactors, because that's how desperate they are to be bred.
Crazy.
Um.
It was the one in Memphis, is that a? It was Elon Musk, right, with the rock?
Yeah.
That was a controversial project.
Yeah, yeah. Uh. So.
Yeah, uh, crazy. Any other items before executive?
Can I ask something, question?
Go for it.
Is there anything you wanna do? If, if we got you until school starts?
Yeah, so I, I have a couple of ideas that I've been on by you guys, it's like, you see, we won't come here, like, probably ready for school, but. I mean, I have a spring, I was preparing logs, so like, anything that we could think of, like, in the last, like, fifteen, 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 I'm looking at everything, but.
Would you rather have a big project?
Oh, that would be awesome, yeah.
Okay. I did think about, um. You know, one of the things I would like to do before, uh, my time's up, is to get that. Arsenal station progress, or project off the ground, um, for a possible mural on the Black Wall.
Hmm.
But because it involves soliciting schools and, and high school engaging with, uh, you know, but might, that might be a good project for it.
Blank slate, look at that.
And it wouldn't be, wouldn't be only for a high school student, it'd be for any artist in the township, but I, it was to get solicit artists for. Who might like to have either installation or a mural or something, um, that showcases either the history of Springfield, or. You know, the Great River Fire of eighteen twelve, whatever it might be, like a, an event.
With the ten parks and.
Nice. Yeah, you might even like the, yeah. That was.
Awesome. Well, yeah, like I wrote an email, you guys can brainstorm some ideas that, that she might wanna be involved in, and it's, the amount of time is totally up to you, like, I know you probably have other obligations and stuff like that.
Oh, but I have to go out, just figure out what I need to, maybe you can add a contact with anyone.
All right, awesome.
Thank you.
Even just sitting in on some of the different committees might be good, just from an educational standpoint, you know?
Maybe we could give you a, um, we could just let you know when those committee meetings happen, and as your schedule allows, or your interests allows, um, come to others.
It's like, um, our friend Langston, who spoke to graduation. The precocious student who was very involved in some subcommittees, but gave a very.
Oh, Asher.
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 But gave a very good speech of graduation.
I knew it was gonna be good as soon as he did back to school, you know?
He is, he is something else.
That reminds me, we should probably think about, since he's graduating, um, yeah, so maybe give him a certain.
Resolution.
Something, and.
Okay.
He was just our first student representative, and then, and then issue out for next year someone else to take his.
Hmm.
We should do that, I think, yeah.
Like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
A plaque.
Well, we'll get him a resolution.
Did he get Representative Nelson to talk about him on the board of Harrisburg?
Who in Harrisburg, sure.
For five million dollars.
But then be sure.
We'd agree in a report.
You sure we have another, uh, young person?
Just the trees.
Did he, how did we find him? We were, we chatted to the support.
He found us, I think.
Yeah, he just started showing up.
No, we, it was listed for someone to do parks and rep.
For a student, a student, a rep.
And then a student rep, but then what happened is Parks and Rec had additional offshoot committees, so he just ended up doing many committees with us.
Okay.
Yeah, because he was on.
He was on the rec center.
Rec center.
Yeah, right, because, uh, we happened to be having, like, the rent.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna go into executive, so Sophia, we, anytime there's a matter of real estate. Or litigation, or personnel matter, those are the only topics that we discuss as a board privately. Um, obviously, for, for obvious reasons, we're talking about someone who's, uh. Working here, you don't wanna discuss like their situation in public, and same thing with, uh, litigation, that kind of thing, so. Uh, we're going to end the public portion of the meeting now and go into executive. Do we have any Zoomers still with us, just two? Okay. Thank you for being here, uh, we will not be coming back to the public meeting, so, uh, same, uh, bat channel, in bad time, see you.